Okay, so we have a call to order.
Our budget committee work session is Monday, March 17th. And with you, everyone, calling us. Um, we will start off with our review of legislative information forecast. So what go around this area? We should do introductions first, actually. Uh, can we start down there with Lisa?
Sure.
Lisa Norman, um, human resources.
Michael Sweeten, Director of Operations.
Melissa Burke, Director of Student Services.
Sarah Crane, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason Johnson, CFO.
Dale Spitzer, Superintendent.
And this is Paul Pauliak, Assistant Superintendent of School.
I'm Bethany Bowers, Human Resources.
Thank you, you're up here, I'm the board chair. Gabrielle Popadic, Budget Committee.
Mike control, Vice Chair.
And Wesley York, Budget Committee.
Heidi Blackwell, I'm a board member.
Dave Fisher, Budget Committee.
Michelle Stroh, Board Member.
Steve Reel, Budget Committee.
Debbie Hayes, Board Member.
Susan Rodway, Budget Committee Member.
Alex Hopper, Board Member.
Reese W., Budget Committee. This is my colleague Pamela White.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We will start off with our review of the legislative information forecast.
Can we just merge? You want to explain this?
When I merge them into one presentation.
Thank you.
But, uh, to start, as I enter my third budget. I want to tell you what a privilege it is to serve Oregon City. I have never worked this hard, more than this before. I've just been reflecting today. As I, this was finished at 3:30 today, so they are one of the most updated version. But, good evening to everyone. I want to thank first, everyone for being here. And I want to tell you, I appreciate your time and your commitment to the district and the community as we start our first Budget Committee informational meeting in preparation for the 2526 budget. Next slide, please. Who's on this slide, Dale?
You have to look at me, I can't see where you are.
The purpose of the budget is to center our attention on our students. The budget should fund our priorities. Tonight, we are going to begin our budget overview. I understand that many of you have budget experience and some of this will be a refresher. For others, this may be new information. And I encourage you to please ask questions along the way. There will be time at the end of each section for your questions. We have three goals this evening. To understand where both core and more funds come from and how they can be used. Number two, to review what the state school fund is and learn a little bit about how it works. Number three, we will end our time with the statewide financial update and a budget to actuals comparison for Oregon City School District as of March 17th, 3:30 PM. Tonight, we will be building your understanding of the school budgeting process. Developing a budget for OCSD. In this meeting and the ones after it, we want to inform our constituents on our resources, where they come from, and how they can be spent. As a tax-funded organization, there are very specific requirements in terms of what we do with our budget appropriations and the process we go through to make a budget. This is a very formal structure that culminates in an actual budget committee meeting where the proposed budget is given and the superintendent delivers her budget message on April 28th. The sessions up until then are used to inform the budget committee and the community about our current financial position and outlook. Your role as a budget committee member is important. Committee members ask budget-related questions, make sure the budget is in line with the strategic plan, and provide community perspective and input to the budget process. In June, the board will adopt the budget. They will have obtuvees on June 16th and also on June 23rd, if needed, to adopt the budget that the budget committee approves.
Can I say something quick? Um, I would like to say, I know more about this later. Our legislative, um, group in Salem creates our state budget for the next biennium. And this is what's called the long session because they do a lot of work and they set the 2527 biennium. It's felt very different already this year than it has in the past. The governor logged her budget at 11.36 before legislative session even started. And we really haven't heard a whole lot else. There's a lot of levers out there that we're hearing about. You'll hear a little bit later about PERS. We're looking at like title funding from the federal government, IDA funding, if that's going to be moving. The governor has logged an accountability bill. There's advocacy for more funding for students experiencing disability. Like, there's a lot of levers out there. So, at some point, and it will probably be over spring break, we're just going to have to make a whole bunch of assumptions. Because the state has to pass their budget by June 30th and we have to pass our budget by June 30th. So, um, it's just going to feel a little, a little bit bumpy. But we're going to do it and we're going to make some informed decisions and we're going to create contingency plans. But, uh, just know that as you're hearing things and you're like, what's that button, what's that button, how does that factor? We too are watching the statistics.
We all agree that our students should be the center of our work. As we move into working on the 2526 budget, I encourage you to imagine the faces of those that we serve. Our four-year strategic plan developed by our community and approved by our board will guide us in the work our district and our budget committee should support that plan. Both the core and the more funds will be used to support the strategic plan and both will serve our students. First, I want to talk to you about core funds. Core funds make up the largest source of our revenue and they are also the least restrictive. As we begin to talk about core funds, know that core is the synonym for the general fund. The general fund funds the core services of the district. Staff, materials, utilities, et cetera. Schools and the district should be able to run completely from the core funds. As we progress into the budget development process and start to look at account codes, the core fund accounts will begin with 100. Within the core funds, there are several sources of revenue. The state school fund, local revenue, and other sources. The state school fund is based on our enrollment and our local property taxes and the thing called the Oregon Common School Fund. In 1859, Congress granted nearly 3.4 million acres to be used for the use of schools. Coincidentally, our district began five years before that. And this fund currently distributes up to 3.5% to 197 school districts across the state. For OCSD, it is approximately a million dollars in current 2425. The local revenue is made up of facility rentals or facility use fees, co-curricular leases, community ed revenue, like driver's ed, preschool, leases to our charter schools, indirect rates from grants, and reimbursements for subs. We also have in there interest on investments earned. Other sources are pass-through money, money that comes to us directly from ESD. In current year, we're budgeted 1.5 million. And also the beginning fund balances in there. Current budget for that is 10.319. Let's dive deeper into the first box, the state school fund, because it's the largest portion of our revenue. Our state school fund allocation for this school year is approximately $95 million. And it's based, that is based on the estimate released on March 5th from ODE. It should be noticed noted that last spring, when the 2425 budget was created, we were in the middle of a biennium. So the state school's fund source of revenue was a known quantity. This year, Dr. Spitzer already touched on this, as we create our budget, our state allocation has not yet been determined by the legislature. This will add an additional layer of complexity to our work. The legislature will finalize the state school funding levels during the legislative session in the spring. Can be as late as June 30th, same as our due date. And as currently, the governor has proposed 12, I'm sorry, 11.36 billion for the biennium over two years to be split, 4951%. Last year, we knew that we had COLAs at 3% plus the steps as roll-up costs that we needed to build into our budget. This year, we're in negotiations with both our licensed and our classified employees, creating additional, again, another layer of complexity to our work because we have an unknown large cost. Our state school fund is tied to our enrollment and we will not know how much we will receive per student, nor will we know how many students there will be during the majority of our budget process. Enrollment is based on estimates and it includes weights.
Are that weights a little bit?
I do hear them second. But I, but I can. So, the weights portion is... So, every day, as when I was a school teacher, they asked me to take rolls. And each day's roll is uploaded into the larger system. And then they multiply the amount of days that they are there times the total per kid amount. So you could get a half of, of, or a third of a kid. But it makes it difficult when Dr. Spitzer's pulling the enrollment numbers because we don't know if the child is sitting there just for that day or if they'll be here for one-third of the year, which is a large variance in what we're getting for that student. In addition to that, we get paid more for several pieces that are weights. One of them are students that receive special services. We get a whole extra weight for that. Uh, English language learners, we get, uh, .5 for that in addition to the single weight. We get a weight, a full weight for pregnant and parenting and we get, uh, for poverty. We get, not a full weight, uh, .25 for poverty. So, anyway, all of those pieces, depending on the student, are then calculated into the ADMW, which is what the paycheck is actually made of. But when we're in real time, it's difficult to tell because that's after audit, what those numbers will be.
I will also add, currently, um, we receive additional funding for students experiencing disabilities, but only up to 11% of our total population. So, um, the national average is 15, uh, we're plus or minus that. But, we only get funding for 11% of them. So, all the other students that might need services, we, in theory, use general more or core funds to make sure that they have their services. We should, we need to care for all of our kids, but we don't get additional funding for that. So that's a, that's something that's currently, um, being considered by the legislature to raise that cap or to lift the cap entirely, so we get full weights for that. Additionally, we have, um, we receive additional funding for high-cost disabilities. I'm looking at Melissa, I'm going to see if I get it right. Um, high-cost disabilities, so if you had a, if you had a, like, a student who maybe was experiencing, um, a physical need where they needed to be in a wheelchair, they need to be catheterized during the day, whatever, they need additional help, like a lot of extra help. That's a, a very high cost to make sure that they have access to education. We get reimbursement for some of it, but what they do is they look across the entire state and then they kind of divvy up the money. So, it's a hard number to predict. Um, and it's not just kids who experience a disability. We could have a school who perhaps is diabetic. And because of their needs and whether or not they're, you know, sailing or, or falling with their sugar count during the day, they might need additional nursing, um, support. And so it's not a disability per se, but it is a medical need that we must serve, which could be a high-cost disability, um, if we...
They count under Section 504. So a student, for example, elementary is a perfect example of a student that might not be experiencing a disability, like academic or anything like that. Can you hear me? Um, however, we have students often who become or new diabetics and their finger's still working and so they have to continue to, they go up and down, up and down, up and down, and they can't have a device yet until that's totally gone. And so typically, we have to have an adult support, often a nurse, because that's what the doctor says in writing, you need a nurse. And so that would be instantly over a hundred thousand. Um, and that's something that we document to the state saying. We actually, that report was due last week, and a high-cost disability. And then, once you hit 30,000, it's anything above that, then we try to get out of the pot. But it just depends on the other districts in the state of who's submitting, who's not. There's like a specific time around it. So that one fluctuates just because it's to be...
And we were only reimbursed for that for about 40 cents on the dollar, on the last one. Which is why there's legislative talk about trying to get that number up because it makes it difficult to determine budget because you're spending it anyway. But if you don't know until everybody submits their needs, because the pot's only so big. That's what's controlling the unknown. So they only have so much allocated. So depending on how much is submitted statewide, the amount we get on reimbursement plus.
Do you know, Dale, if, if the bill of up to 50% passes, is that going to go into effect for 2526? Or is it going to be?
No, it'll be for the next one.
It'll be, it'll be...
I can answer that. It depends, so it'd be typically, it might, it might be July 1st start date, yeah.
That's next one, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and so it'd probably be for our next census, so like we, it's always in December. So it'd probably be for the 2526 school year census.
And, uh, Mark Miku leads the Ways and Means Committee, um, is coming this week to talk to Mos and I and visit Holcomb. So we'll ask that question.
And the Ways and Means is where the budget comes from. Uh, and I've already said this several times, but I want to say it again. Because the 11% is a, considered a carve-out. We get the 11.36, is the big number. And then we subtract all of these carve-outs. If they raise that percent and don't raise the 11.36, they just moved it from the general fund to this. Does that make sense? So I keep trying to say for those of you when you're talking to your legislators, if they don't raise the big number and they raise the cap, we're just taking a general fund. We're not gaining any actual revenue. So what we're currently doing, supporting kids with general fund money, anyway.
Could you please say that again about if they raise the cap, they also need to raise what? Because I write my legislation, so...
Yeah, yeah, so, so the proposal right now for the biennium is 11.36 billion. We multiply the first year of the biennium times that number, 49%, which gives us a big number. 49% of that. Then they start to carve out all of these programs, menstrual dignity. In other words, when they legislate these things, they don't give extra money for it. They just pass it, mandate it, and then they carve it out before they send you the check. So what I keep saying is if they raise the cap without new money to the big number, we've done nothing but move it from the general fund to support through more restriction, in a certain way. Which is what we're doing right now, anyway. We're still serving the kids over 11%. So you have to kind of watch this political, um, yeah. And I don't hear a lot of people talking about that. That's what I keep talking about. I don't want to lose our eye on the ball, which is, I need that other number to go up, too. Okay. And, perfect segue, we cannot control the revenue from the state school fund. Projections are made when we create the budget, which we all, not all of us, many of us worked hard on for the year we're currently in. And not still thunder from the last couple pages, but I'm going to show you. We made assumptions, we've worked hard at it, and things move around during the school year. They require ongoing monitoring throughout each school year. Revenue from the state school fund is always an estimate. There are many things that we cannot control. We have to estimate how much our local property tax revenue there is, which is difficult to tell if people are going to pay their taxes and how many of them. This one's really important because it is subtracted from that big number before they send you the remainder. So if I happen like last year, we collected $2 million more than I budgeted, I had to immediately tell them, ODE, to subtract that from our current payments. Otherwise, in the May surprise, when they balance it, they paid you double on that $2 million and they want it back. That, I'm just showing you, that's... Okay, there are, I'm sorry, so student enrollment numbers in OC and throughout the state, actuals versus estimates. In addition to our enrollment numbers, we get additional weights, which we already talked about. This provides additional funding for English learners, students experiencing disabilities, poverty and parenting and parent, pregnant, parenting teens. As a business owner for many years, this was a steep learning curve. It's very important for me to be transparent and clear. The state school fund is a pool of money that is set aside to educate kids throughout the state. After the school starts, it gets shifted around based on actual student counts in each district and it changes over the course of the year. Monitoring revenue of the core funds requires flexibility. We're about to hear about more funds. What questions do you have for me about core funds?
Jason, how often do you have to report that? The changes of the, the enrollments and, and everything? I mean, is that a monthly, a quarterly?
Quarterly, we upload our, everyone, all 197 districts upload and then, then they recalculate. But there was a problem this year, first time that I know of from any of my peers, in that, so after October 1st, everyone's required to upload. They recalculate and redistribute. They didn't do it. They said, well, there wasn't enough changes. So then, the second one happens at the end of December, period two. Everybody uploads, they recalculate, redistribute. Meaning they divide your remaining checks by the remainder of what you have left for you to be paid. It still took until, the first one I got was on February 21st this year. So mind you, we built our budget based on what Dale and I told them in December of 2003. We built the budget based on that estimate. In June of '24, June 20th of '24, after our budget was done, they gave us, they gave us what they paid us on all year. So it wasn't until May, March 5th that they finally told me this year how much I get per kid and how many kids they're going to pay me. And like I say, that's never happened in any person in my role's minds history that have been that delayed. So now, but you know, we'll, we'll get to that. It makes my job harder.
And those payouts, the cheater, are they monthly or are they quarterly?
Yeah, they pay us on the 15th every month.
But they adjust at quarter, usually.
Yeah, but they didn't until May, March 5th this time. So, yeah, so, so the problem is if you don't account for it and you aren't predicting its effect, you can not, this happens to districts. They don't get a check on May 15th at all. And that's where you see people lopping off days and saying, we can't send this to school. That's what's happening. Okay. Oh, sorry.
Um, when, when you say "they," they didn't send you that check. Who is "they"?
Uh, ODE, if, if they paid you everything that you earned that year, you don't get a check in May.
So ODE?
Yeah, Oregon Department of Education.
I was all of a sudden the assumption that enrollment was based on students registered in August, September, and that was the hard number that was used. Are, are you saying that it's literally every day?
Every day.
And it's recalculated daily?
Quarterly. Quarterly, they, you upload all the data from the beginning of school through the first day and October. On the state.
Right.
So, and then they take all those samplings from every day and they multiply the amount of days that a kid existed in the seat. And then they pay you from the total amount, multiply it times that fraction. Yes. So a kid could, a kid could enter for two months, go somewhere else, and then re-enter, app. And you'll see a fraction applied to the total for both, for the time that they were here.
Is the state aware the school districts have zero control of that?
Uh, I mean, yeah, they're very, very bright.
As a teacher, I can't tell you how many times, you know, April comes along, we're going to be in Disneyland for two weeks.
Well, so...
And so that's, that's part of it, right?
Say, say my kid gets the flu, but he's doing lessons at health, because he's home for two weeks, whatever, still not counted.
Doesn't count, I'm going to see.
It's an average...
There is a 10-day drop.
Yeah, nice to know about that.
So I don't, I don't know, I'm sorry, if they're marked sick, we need Heather. We need Heather.
I don't, I don't, I don't submit...
No, it's, it's an average daily membership. So, I mean, you would need to miss a significant portion of the school year in order to like not be counted. But, most people who are sick, it's like, you know, you switch from being 95 to 93, it's, it's minimal.
It's really when they're dropped.
It's really when they're dropped, yeah.
And that's after 10 days. So if they did go on vacation for 10 days, actual school days in session, they could have a hospital. They would be dropped as a staple. And then we click a box and say, you're back, yay.
So, to be clear, I don't fill out this, it would be a conflict of interest for me to be able to say that this year. I, I, I separate the, yeah. And so, um, I tend to wait until the state does their work on the math because that's what my check. So that's what you'll see, average daily membership with an R in my school. In my business, they call that R-reality. And that's with the weights of the number of days that a kid was here.
I, I think the important thing to think about with all these weights is just that it's very hard to, you know, hit the dart in the middle of the bullseye because you get weights for kids who are emerging bilinguals, who experience a disability, who, you know, pregnant and parenting, like, it's a moving target. So as kids come and move and come in and go, and it's, it really is like throwing spaghetti at the wall a little bit. And I think that is important for you to understand as a budget committee because one of the things that we've worked really hard on is trying to be as transparent with our community and our staff about how we are thinking about budgeting, but it's always an estimate. Everything is always an estimate. And one of the things you'll see later is that, um, the per pupil amount usually stays flat or it goes up a little bit. This time, it actually went down a little bit. And again, that's not something people, we've seen. So there's some, um, there's some, I don't know, something in the ether that's making us like, oh, hmm, so we're, we're watching. I will also say teacher experience, that's another one I just want to point out. So for teacher experience, the state recognizes that if your average teacher is more experienced, they cost you a little bit more. And they didn't want people, um, moving people out who are experienced or only getting people who are inexperienced because having that breadth of experience in the school system is really strong for mentoring and support. new ideas, all the things. And so there's a little bit of a differential based on a, on a, a student experience ratio. So one is like middle, and if you're under, your teachers are probably a little less experienced and therefore maybe cheaper. And if you are over one, they're more experienced and therefore probably a little more expensive. So there's a little bit of a ratio, they give just a little bit of extra money for more experienced teachers, but that'll be a factor, yes, later.
The average teacher's experience in state subtracted from the average teacher's experience in the district.
In our district, yeah.
Okay, more funds. Got cutie. Our special revenue funds are more funds, and they are largely made up of grants. More funds are designed to support the core funds. Our more funds are different than our core funds. More funds are additional grants and funding sources for targeted purposes. As we progress in our budget development process into account codes, the more fund accounts will be the 200 level funds compared to the core funds, which is our 100 level. Now let's talk about specific 200 level more funds. The largest of these is.
You can have it on there.
You want it on there?
No, I was just asking.
No, but this is only, this is the only general fund.
This ain't on the budget, this is 70, about $60 million.
Multi-doubled that.
The largest of the more funds are the SIA, High School Success slash Measure 98, I'm not sure why it has two names, and Title Funds. And Dr. Crane's gonna share a little bit about our grant process.
Thank you. I really just wanna make sure that you understand, we are entirely thankful for all the funds that we get from any source, right? And they do, they do have specific things that they're earmarked for. So the bullets, the first four bullets, as well as the very last bullet, are actually what we call integrated grants. We don't call it, the state calls it that, we do too, but it's not our name for it. And so we integrate our application, we're going through that process now. You've probably got a survey from me in January. Thank you if you filled it out, to, to kinda say how we wanna spend our funds. And, and even though they are integrated, they all have their own rules and their own reports. So we can do certain things with student investment account money that we, that is different than what we can do with High School Success money. Sometimes there's overlap, sometimes there's not. But it's our job to make sure we're spending the funds correctly within the bounds of the budget and hoping to try to make them always more funds. So our kids are getting more because of this additional money that we're getting. Title funds are a little bit different, those come from the federal government. And at this point, we have been on a big old roller coaster ride on whether we're getting them, we're not getting them, we're getting some of them, we're getting part of them. So we are thinking very strategically about what we do with, with those funds or without those funds. And those are also, though, targeted towards specific things. So for example, our Title I funds are for, are five of our six elementary schools are considered Title I based on the amount of poverty that they experience there. And so those funds have to be spent there, but they also can't be things we're buying for the whole district. And then we just say, oh, we'll just pay for them out of title. It has to be, again, it has to be supplemental, it has to be extra. So we're just keeping an eye on that. And we're also keep, I just saw an email today about summer school. We asked, because it never hurts to ask, of course, we got that, we don't have an answer for you yet, but we tried. And we'll just keep paying attention. It's very hard for things like that to pull together a summer school really quick. So we're planning as if we're gonna have summer school with some funds, and if we can expand, we will, and if we can't, we'll do what. Any questions?
Historically, what percentage of our district's funds have come from the federal government? I know, I know you can't answer it for now, I, I get that.
No, no, right, for next year, but I'm, I'm gonna have Jason do math in a second. But you have the numbers on the following slide.
Yes.
Yeah.
Although they're not Title.
Well, I mean, yeah, let's do that, look at that. So, the bottom ones are federally sourced, the Title One. And IDA, yes, yes, which is about 1.89. 6, I think.
1.6. Yeah, 1.7.
So it's about, a little over 3 million for Title and IDA grants coming from the federal government.
And that's in relationship to the state level, both local poverty tax of 111. So a little less than 3%.
A little bit over 10% of the state education budget comes. A little bit over 10% of the state education budget comes from the federal government.
Really?
Yes. And we're very little compared to other states.
We are. And those first two, the student investment account and high school success, those are state monies, but the bottom ones are federal monies. And to Director Control's point, this, the reason this is not on your financial report, and we can dive into that, we'll bring it next time too, but you have somebody that is hired from our fiscal team that just tracks the grant funds. Because again, they have to be spent on certain things, they're not as flexible. And Sarah and her team have their eyes on spending every single penny. They also have different due dates. So Title I, I think you can spend up to.
September 30th?
Yeah.
Unless you have carryover, and then you can spend that a lot like this.
Yeah, there's all sorts of different rules. So some of them have to be spent by June. You know, Title I sometimes will fund summer programming, which is nice for Title I schools, so that allows us to run summer programming, do our September payroll, and then close it up by October. So every, every one of our grants have their own little nuances.
I do think one thing you said is really important, that it's, it's, they're really not meant to be like a savings account or a rainy day account. You know, we've, we've been saying in my department, this year's money, this year's kids. Like this money is given to us for this year's kids to help them be more successful and have whatever they need. So we really are trying to spend every penny we can, we don't wanna send any money back to the state. So we're, we're trying really, really hard to make sure. And it's not that it's hard to spend money, it's just that it's hard to make sure you spend the exact right amount of money on the right specific things, right? So I spend a lot of time saying, could we do this with that money? And then someone says, no, no, you can't do that. I go, okay, okay, how about this? And so we find the things, right? Actually, Susan had a question real quick, that's okay. Simple yes or no, did we have summer school last year?
Yes.
We did?
Yeah.
At Gardner Middle School.
I just wanna mention that when we say, well, we try to spend every bit of the money. Impactfully, right? It's not just.
Well, that is a very, very good point, yes. We don't wanna waste money either, so we don't wanna save it, but we don't wanna waste it. You're absolutely right, and it does need to be impactful and appropriate and within the bounds of the, the rules. But we definitely want it to make it impactant.
So the Title II and Title III and Title IV, can you explain what those?
Sure. So Title I, you know, we just said right is poverty. Title II is usually used for math and reading professional development. That's actually the one, as of, you know, today, we're hearing, we won't get any, although again, we've been hearing that. And so who knows? And then Title III is really for emerging bilingual students. And Title IV, we're actually allowed to put that into Title I. And so we combine those, and in this moment, I'm not remembering what Title IV is, because we combined it. I'll go. I don't wanna misspeak. Yeah. Uh, there are other, like little P, you know, everything has a Title I-A and Title I-C, and, you know, there's a lot of others as well, but this is like the bulk.
And, just, just to be clear, when we didn't put them on here, the reason why we focus our attention on the general fund is because these funds cannot finish in the negative. They have to spend up to it and not go over. If they accidentally go over, we have to transfer money out of general fund, because it will be an auto-fund. They cannot finish in the negative. 200, none of them. Nutrition services, ending with a three, 300, all of our debts are, they cannot finish in the negative. It has to be backfilled, which is why our ending fund balance, when we're watching the projections, is always focused solely on the general fund. Case in point, all the other funds have to be backfilled if we were to go over. Cannot finish in the negative on anything that has a 2 or 3 or 4. Okay. So, we'll, we'll go back to the slide that, yeah. So the largest of these sources is the student investment account. It's mostly targeted towards reducing class size, providing well-rounded education, and addressing student health and safety, and ongoing community engagement. The High School Success or the Measure 98 grant is targeted towards dropout prevention, increasing and improving career technical education, and creating college and career opportunities for students. The Title Grants are the federal grants directed towards providing students and families experiencing poverty as Title I. I know that we were just questioning this. Professional development for staff in Title II, and supporting emerging bilinguals in Title III. Do you find four?
I have a cheat sheet. So it's student success, tech, well-rounded education, and safety. And you are allowed to add it to Title I-A, and then you use it with those other funds.
So annually, Dr. Crane writes grant plans with measurable goals that have to be approved by the Oregon Department of Education. Last year was the first year the state's integrated grant application, as ODE wanted to help us better maximize these funds. Where there was crossover, we will dive more into that in future budget conversations. Our budget for these funds is also built on estimates, because actual amounts are not given to us until October of the year that we already are in. Next slide, please.
Oops, I'm gonna have to ask for that one more time. What's given us in October? What's given, what's the number that was given us in October?
The actual amount that exists for us to spend in those grants. So the preliminary allocations are what we will build the budget of. But we don't get actuals, they don't tell us exactly how much we will get till October of the year after school starts.
Okay.
In my family, we always plan for the worst, hope for the best. Has that historically been the approach of the budget committee? We're gonna plan conservatively and then just cross everything we have and hope?
Historically, yes.
We, we. It's important to put to work the dollars that are given to us by the public for the children. That's the number one priority. We also want to finish with what we said we would to the public in terms of reserves. The 200 funds are particularly tricky, because if we don't budget for them, we don't receive allocation from the board to spend them. So because they can't finish in the negative, we would be a little more willing to, in the 200s, budget a little more, what is the word you?
Plan for the worst, hope for the best.
No, no. In other words, we might as well plan for it, because if we receive it, we want to be able to spend it. Remember, you're not gonna tell me till October. And because the 200s can't finish in the negative, there's not the risk of, because it will have to come out as general. Now, the general fund budget has to be more perfect.
So yes, more conservative with contingency plans.
That's right. Okay, these are some grants specific to student services. The largest of these is the IDA grant. Mossberg adds that up. Next slide, please. Is that the next slide?
Yep.
It is important that the expenses related to the more funds stay true to the grant narratives. The purpose of grants is to use the funds in a way that aligns with the restrictions of that grant. School needs to be paid for out of core funds, more funds are used to supplement the core. Now, this is the word that you will hear. Otherwise, it's called supplanting, instead of supplement. So we're not allowed to supplant with the grant. I should write it out. These, these can be complex, because we get an estimate in the spring, and the final allocations are not given to us until the fallout. We are constantly monitoring the more fund projections versus actuals, because any overages must be transferred and paid for with the core funds. Okay. Okay. Questions about more funds?
Has Oregon made any indication as to if federal funds, you know, peter out? Is Oregon gonna make up that difference, or is that just, no one knows?
I would say Oregon's largest concern is the reduction in federal funds, or the possibility of reduction in federal funds outside of education. That's the primary concern of the government. If you reduce the general budget in Oregon by 40%, it puts pressure on what she's promised to, to, to education. Yes, that's, that's the largest concern.
So, so I will add on to that, I will say, so one of the things I do every Friday is I chime in and listen to kind of the update of what happened during the week and what's, you know, being moved around and proposed. And again, I hear more about what if, like Medicaid, or some of those health resources that are federally funded, go by the wayside, then what does Oregon do to support kids and families? So it's peripheral, but obviously it's related to how we take care of our kids and families. So I hear that more so. We haven't really heard much about if any of the Title I or IDA gets cut, what Oregon might do. That hasn't really been a big topic at this point.
And, and we don't know.
We don't.
No one knows.
Yeah.
But lots of people are spending lots of time trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, more questions?
More questions on more?
Um, I will, I will say, and I don't have the exact number, but they have already logged kind of a potential, what the grants might be, and they look pretty flat, is that right?
They look pretty flat, meaning that, and at first I was like, ooh, and then I went, oh wait, we'll have costs. So, meaning we will have to make some changes. Even if we just said we wanna do everything exactly the same next year, we wouldn't be able to, we'd have to remove some things.
It's not the same amount of money, that's what they're looking at so far.
Yeah. And that's a real early log, right? So we're not, we're not sure.
Does it make sense what Dr. Crane just said? If the total doesn't change, then the people that are being paid for in the total do change, we have to make changes that affect them.
So are the grants determined by the state and that is allocated to the districts? And is there also specific grants that, that this district could apply for individually?
Yeah, because it's an important way that these are non-competitive grants. So the truth is, we're gonna apply, the board's gonna hopefully approve the application next month, and we're gonna apply, but the state could say, we don't really like your answer to number two, so you need to fix it before we give you the money. But if, or we don't like this budget part, so you're gonna have to fix it. But they would allow us to fix it and do something, you know, that falls in line, and they tell us why it doesn't fall in line. There are always other grants we can apply for as entity, you know, and our, the same person who runs our grants also looks to see, when people find a grant, they reach out and they fill out a form, and they request. And what we're trying to figure out at that point is, is the $500 worth all the recording requirements that it's gonna take? Or is it really something in line with our strategic plan? You know, there's grants out there for everything, and so we analyze those as they come in, but.
Are those more likely to be federal or state, those one-off?
I think a lot of them are more like personal business, kind of.
Oh, the private. Like the reptile society of Minnesota.
Yeah, or the Gates Foundation.
Yes, yeah, yes.
So we have to make sure we're not promising to buy lizard pellets for 10.
But if you're asking if the state would sell non-competitive, or competitive grants, I think they have in the past at some different things, but it's not normal.
It's not worth having a grant team that just chases a bunch of individual grants, it doesn't sound like.
I mean, schools are often, in private foundations, having been a fundraiser for many years,
Well, schools are often, in private foundations, having been a fundraiser for many years, private foundations tend to stay away from schools. Now, maybe that'll change. But for the most part, public school is considered funded by foundations. And only occasionally more forward-thinking foundations will do that. And a lot of times, like you said, their five hundred bucks probably, the impact on our budget probably isn't worth it, what it's gonna cost to... Because sometimes they're utterly ridiculous, as some of them.
What you do see, though, is teachers might apply for a grant.
Yeah, yeah.
And they might get a fund for their classroom. But that wouldn't be considered.
But a lot of times, you don't have to chase that one. A lot of times, that one is, we're gonna give you five hundred dollars, send us your receipts. I mean, it's not hard work.
What did you mean by five hundred dollars? I missed that part.
I just meant if the total amount of the grant you're going to apply for is, let's just pretend, five hundred dollars, that could be great unless they say, and all you have to do for this five hundred dollars is report daily on what you did with the money and how often you did it. And, and it like becomes so much work that you're like, you, thank you for your five hundred dollars. No, thank you for your five hundred.
Well, and actually even higher than that.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there are definitely times when the grant team goes, any idea what that grant like requires from us?
Yeah.
I will say, there was a time, this ages me, but there was a time where the state would offer opportunities for grants, where people could apply for them.
Competitive, yeah.
Yeah, competitive grants around technology or, you know, I don't know, building a family resource area, something like that. There was a time that that happened. I haven't seen that in nearly over a decade. Which is weird, because I've only been around like twelve years.
I mean, to be honest, the summer school money was somewhat like that last year. You had, you had to apply for it.
You had to apply for it, but they, they ranked you.
They gave it to you.
No, they ranked you and then they only gave it to like the top like seventy-seven.
Of which we were...
And that was based, the ranking...
We were not.
We were not, we were not paid.
What was the ranking based on? I can't remember.
We were, we were just...
It was, it was, it was about the percentage of students experiencing poverty, your graduation rates, it was some formula.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I mean, we got some work to do. I don't know how long you guys wanna be here. Okay. We will look at the legislative and statewide financial updates and forecasts, the variance factors for the budget planning and the budget to actuals update. Next. We will continue to watch the 2025 legislative long session, because it will have financial implications on our budget. Legislators are attending to the uncertainty at the federal level as well as us waiting for, they're waiting for potential changes in Medicaid funding, educational funding, and a host of other potential budget impacts. Final decisions on budgets, including the state school fund, are likely to be made after the twenty-five, twenty-six revenue forecast is released in late May. Nonetheless, we must have a budget passed here in Oregon City School District by the end of June. So, we will be making some assumptions, as Dr. Spitzer told you, along the way in order to meet the state requirement for the deadline of the filing of our, of our budget. Some of the items that we are watching include: Our legislators clearly understand that our special education funding is insufficient and inequitable. They are considering increasing funding for special education in two key areas. Number one, we've talked about raising the eleven percent cap. And number two, we've also discussed increasing the high-cost disability rate. Currently, we receive additional funding.
I, just for, there's a few new people. Can you explain, it took me a long time to understand this, that the eleven percent state cap, it's eleven percent of our budget, correct?
Eleven per...
Total population.
Total population.
Eleven, eleven percent of the ADMR.
Yes.
Out of the weights.
It wasn't technical.
After, yeah.
Yeah, and you did discuss that earlier.
Yeah.
Oh, he did, I just went there, apologies. Thank you.
Currently, we receive funding for up to eleven percent for our students qualifying for special education services, but we are close to the national average of we're serving fifteen percent of several times. For the high-cost disabilities, serving the students with disabilities whose needs exceed the amount therefore termed as high-cost, we only receive a portion of the money from the state. The Joint Ways and Means Educational Subcommittee, again, that's the committee that will set the budget, will dive into educational funding. They, they started last week, March tenth through the thirteenth. The committee will hold a series of hearings on Senate Bill fifty-five fifteen, which funds the Oregon Department of Education, as well as Senate Bill fifty-five sixteen, which contains the state school fund. The hearings won't have a state school fund amount yet for the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium, but they will delve into the nooks and crannies of educational finances. The March economic revenue forecast released is projected to generate an additional, now, this is on a statewide level, is, is projected to generate an additional two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-five million in net general fund plus lottery fund resources for the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium compared to December twenty-four forecast. So, it's up. For the first time in history, the projected net general fund plus lottery resources for the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium exceeded forty billion dollars, forty-point-one-three-eight billion, to be exact, projected revenue for Oregon. As we near the end of this biennium, there is a nine-hundred-and-ninety-three-million-dollar corporate kicker projected. And that one's important, because the corporate kicker funds are, will be required to be spent on K-12 education during the twenty-five, twenty-seven budget cycle. Yes.
So, how often do we get this corporate kicker? Is that like every ten years?
At the end of each biennium. So, we've been projecting it. Mind you, at this exact meeting last year, it was exactly projected to be nine-hundred-and-ninety-three million.
It's not a bad...
It is down from December, but I think it's interesting that we're right on, right on the mark. The state's, this is important. The state's reserve accounts have grown and are currently projected to reach five-point-five billion by the end of twenty-three, twenty-five. During this exact meeting last year at this time, they projected that to be four-point-two-two billion. Within the projected five-point-five billion in reserve account, there is the Education Stability Fund. That's projected to be a billion. The rainy day fund is projected to have one-point-nine billion in it. And the cash reserves are two-point-five-eight-six billion. These are equivalent to nineteen-point-eight percent of the state's general fund. Please note that these cash reserves will be rolled into the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium and are included in the projected revenues, just like we do. Ending fund balance becomes beginning fund balance for the next budget cycle. To put this into perspective, Oregon City School District was, if we were similarly projecting to finish the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year with a nineteen-point-eight percent of our general fund budget to be in our ending fund balance, we would have an ending fund balance of twenty-one-point-nine million dollars. I believe that Oregon is in a very strong financial position. The question is, how will Oregon use the monies? And which portion of these reserves, if any, will come to the K-12 education? We are watching. Part of the challenge on a budget committee is understanding the changes in both revenue and expenses that happen throughout each year. Here are some of the main drivers and variability. The average daily membership weighted, which we've talked about. This is the student enrollment with the extra weights for the type of the student enrolled in our district. This is the largest variable and the largest contribution to our district's revenue. We are estimating how many students are gonna show up and how many, how much ODE will spend, will invest in each one. Insurance is also a variable that is difficult to predict. Health insurance, property and liability insurance typically increase annually. Actuals versus projections, projections need to be monitored. The public employment retirement system, the first. The amount charged to the districts is set every two years, and even a one percent increase can have a significant fiscal impact. For our next biennium, Oregon City School District was told ours will increase six percent. Six percent next year, six percent to the year. I'm projecting that that will be about three-point-five-million-dollar increase over this year. State requirements. These are all sorts of legislated laws that can come. We experienced some of them last year. For instance, paid leave Oregon. Unemployment benefits for employees can be very hard to predict its cost. We worked hard on it last year. And guess what? We were wrong. Okay, next slide.
Is it positive or negative?
Oh, we, we, we budgeted too high.
It was, yeah, there was legislation that was passed that allowed ten-month employees to get unemployment throughout the summer. So, we worked hard to try to offer jobs during the summer, hoping people would take them. And not only did people not take them, we didn't have nearly the same amount of people taking unemployment last year. We did see a growth over the summer. So, we predict that it'll be higher this summer than last summer, but not where we thought it was gonna be. We, of course, predicted everyone would, so that we were just prepared, but, yeah.
We will now compare our estimated actuals as of March fifth compared to what we budgeted for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, please now focus your attention on this. I wanna start our budget to actuals update in the upper portion of the report in front of you, where I have summarized the revenue. Please first look at the state line, where you will see a decrease in revenue. We are currently, as of March fifth, estimating a reduction in revenue from the state of one-point-six-four-five million compared to our expected budgeted revenue. As I repeat, budgets are based on a specific point in time, and we use the best information we are given at that point in time. Now, for my board members, that has changed since February's financial update. Literally, we saw a reduction on February twenty-first. Again, I guess we, we do cover that, so I can just go back to it. Typically, we're given an update from the state of our revenue per student as well as the amount of verified student count after period one in October. We did not see this happen this year, and our adjustment was not shared with us until after second period at the end of February. And then the adjustment, finally, after they made a revision after the twenty-first, they gave me another one on March fifth, which is what I was figuring out for you today. So, the most current estimate from ODE on March fifth is calculating our ADMW, average student daily membership with weights applied, to be eighty-two weights below the adopted budget. This is coupled with a reduction in our statewide per-student rate. The amount we get per kid was budgeted at ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventeen dollars per kid and told to us all the way until February twenty-first, mind you. I have no more information. Ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventeen per student to ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-seven per student, which means that their amount of money is only so much. So, more kids were divided into it than they had guessed there would be on the average. We also received a reduction, which we talked about a little bit earlier, in our teacher experience are from a one-point-five-one above the state average, meaning our teachers on average were one-point-five-one, had one-point-wa-five-one more years' experience than the average of the state, to a point-seven-two, when compared to the state average, which brings in less revenue. Our final audited twenty-three, twenty-four ending fund balance was ten-point-nine-seven, nine-nine-four million. This is six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars over the ten-point-three million we projected our ending fund balance to be. So, this slight increase in revenue is helping to offset some of the reduction in revenue that we received on March fifth. Please keep in mind that revenue is based on projections and it is something that we closely monitor. Moving to the bottom of the page, you will see our estimated expenses as of this morning are projected to be approximately one-hundred-and-eleven-million-dollar, six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Note approximately thirteen-thousand dollars more than budget, which, if it stays that close, as Dr. Spitzer told you, I will be very surprised. But that's pretty tight on the expense side. Budgets are used to creating estimates and projections. Most of our money pays employees salaries and benefits, and the employees used to build the projections are not the same as those being paid in twenty-four, twenty-five. Same for our work. I will build you a proposal based on the people that worked for us on February third, I think is when I took the data out. It's moving around in reality, and I have to start working on that and applying these assumptions to it. No proof that they will be here when we start school next year, so that's some of it. Our budgeted ending fund balance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is five-point-five-three million. That's board-required, five percent, plus a one-point-seven-million-dollar contingency. For Director Hayes, a total of six-point-five percent. We will continue to monitor our budget monthly as we move closer to the end of the year. At this time, it appears to be that we are mostly on track. Now, I know at the bottom, you're seeing a reduction, that number in February. And I mean, it said positive. I believed at that point it would be positive, those two numbers, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, I have that delta down now. I believe it's below seven-hundred, seven thousand. Now, please keep in mind, it's point-six of a percent. So, I know that it's a lot of money, but I'm just saying, we have to land F-14 on an aircraft carrier in a storm. And it can be done, but both are moving around, right, all the time? So, I mean, it's done all the time. Okay. What questions do you have about budget to actuals update?
Were there any areas that were significantly different than what you expected that stick out?
Um, yeah, I mean, that one wasn't fun. I don't like that one at all. We both moved how much I get per kid and I being paid off less kids than we projected in December of twenty-three. And you don't tell them until March fifth of the year, I don't like that at all.
I would also say that we're watching salaries, like with family leave and some of those other opportunities for people to take care of themselves and their families. We're having to hire more subs, more long-term subs, and so that's up a little at this moment. We're having to hire more subs, more long-term subs, and so that's up a little at this moment compared to what we are expecting.
And if you look, she's talking about the salary section there, we're up about a million, but the next order row down, the associated payroll costs, you can see is under.
It's, yeah, it's the opposite.
Correct, which is covering, which is covering the overage. Because those two are together in the allocation, yeah. So we're up in salaries and we're down almost 2 million and over budget, down meaning they're not using the associated payroll costs at the same level as we're spreading our salaries.
What's going on with community services?
Tell me more about that.
Uh, quite a bit.
Um, that's because Jason, the budget, and the budget committee, we, um, I was trying very hard to budget our, all of our community ed services outside of the general fund because they were mixed, like, not, not consistent, revenue and expenses. So I was trying to get all the expenses and revenue in the two months. And one of the employees, because they spend a portion of their day renting facilities, I have to keep that expense in the general fund because I have lights and heat. I have other costs that go up that would count against that revenue. That was my mistake. I budgeted her completely as an FTE in the 200s, which again, don't show here. And she had to be, she had to remain in the general fund. So I will be coming to the board. I'm waiting to see how else the others do, but I do have to come and ask for forgiveness on the allocation because I made an error. So I have someone coded, I'm leaving her there, the employee there because that's where the revenue is being generated, as well as other expenses. So I don't feel comfortable moving her out, does that make sense? But I, in the budget, I had her completely in the 200 because I, I was trying to keep all of our community ed stuff for the first time. I was trying to separate all, so that I could tell, is it profitable as a fund? That's what that, that's why it's over budget.
But it will show, on those 200s, it's going to be, going to take it out of that, so you have to recognize.
Well, but again, over there, they have to finish at zero.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so they could, many of them could be, have more than we expected. I mean, could have a budget higher than we generate. But because the onus is on me to make sure that they're all finishing, none of them can be negative. So just know that.
They'll be positive.
They have to be positive.
You took her money.
Well, all, but no, I budgeted her revenue and the expense in the 200. But the reason why this allocation is all, I have to come to the board and say, I, I need permission.
And you can bring what details at that time?
Yeah.
But we're over, I mean, people can ask more questions, but if you want to ask questions at the end, then I can. Oh, you can go ahead.
No, it's question time now.
Yeah, go ahead.
We talked quite a bit last year about allocation over several years being capital expenses in, in terms of the aging schools. Have there been any significant discussions related to that since that time?
Like what we're doing with capital expenses?
Aging, with, in terms of aging buildings and schools and related to their upkeep and maintenance.
Yeah, we, uh, we just deposited 173.6 million dollars in, in an account for work.
They're wrong.
Boy, did we?
But, but, yeah, we have our funds, so that was the aging buildings.
Yes, just, I live next to Case and there's like pieces of the building falling down on the sidewalk and that's what we're talking about and I was like, hey, maybe I should call somebody and say, hey, there's something going on. Yes, yes.
And that is not part of the.
No, I know, I know, it just was a, was a nice reminder for me.
Remember. Okay, let me, let me wrap this up if it's okay, questions? We have one more budget committee informational meeting on April 28th. The official budget committee meetings will begin on May 12th, where the budget will be presented with the budget message. The meetings are designed to review the budget, accept public comment, and ultimately approve the budget. We're scheduled to have a public hearing where the board may adopt the budget on June 2nd?
Yeah, no, it would be the June 2nd.
It'll be the next week.
Should be the 2nd.
Will you look at your calendar?
It should be the 2nd.
I'm worried I didn't. Okay, I'm sorry, budget committee meetings, March 17th, April 28th. Budget committee official meetings, May 12th, May 27th, and June 2nd, yes, and June 16th. I do invite you all to reach out and ask questions. Last year, I've received some via email. In years past, I've met on Zoom to answer questions, so please, I ask you to reach out and ask questions. And again, I want to thank you for your time and commitment to the district.
And if you're new to the budget committee or you're an experienced budget committee member and you'd just like to have like a tutoring session, Jason, myself, we're happy to go page by page, whatever is going to help you feel caught up in making informed decisions. It's a hundred plus page document, we don't expect you to memorize it, he does, not me. But we're happy to kind of go over any and all of that. I will say this is our proposed calendar and we will be watching what happens in the next couple of months. We're expecting the state to tell us their lobs sometime, hopefully between May 12th and May 27th at the latest, but I don't really know if we're going to hit that mark. So again, we're going to build a budget on a bunch of assumptions. And then just, we'll see how close we are and if we have to come back and make some new documents, some new theories for you to consider, we will, but we're trying to, we're trying to get close.
So Dale, this probably goes to you, based on this, um, this schedule, then we would ideally, if, if nothing happened and the committee adopted the budget on the 2nd, we would, as a board, then vote on it on the 9th. If we went and, and the, um, because it says June 16th, but that's, is it different? Because the 9th is our second too.
So the, can I, sorry, I have the schedule for me unless you do. Please go ahead. Um, so the 2nd, right now, we have as our third official budget committee meeting and potential budget approval by the committee. And then the 16th would be our board meeting, um, but that would be, wait, no.
Why is the 16th the board meeting? That's, that's the third.
It's, it's only if we need it, I have to publish it in, or put it on the board.
No, no, the 16th is a board, I'm sorry, the 16th is the budget hearing and it would be a special session. That's why we, there was a reason because we needed space between the, yeah, actually adopting, or the approval of the budget and then having the hearing to adopt it.
Oh, okay, so it'll be specifically hearing and not done on the 9th, which is our regular.
It will be a special session.
And so if it's a special session, we will also be able to adopt, right?
Yes.
The board could adopt the budget on the 2nd.
Could, no.
Yes.
Well, we don't have, we have to have a public hearing.
Has to be a public hearing. That's a public hearing.
That is a public hearing.
And then we can have a special session.
In order to adopt the budget.
Yeah. We can, uh, we have a budget calendar, we'll make sure we get that back. So can we put some contingency dates in here? So Holly or Jason can send it out to you again, this budget calendar, so that you can see it. Because we did build in contingency dates because like Director, Director Controller was saying, there has to be a certain number of days between things and you have to give a certain number of notice days before the board votes, it's very complex. And because Memorial Day is in there, it kicks us off because we can't leave on that Monday. And they have to have a certain number of days, so that's why it kicks it out till June 2nd.
Yes, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, that's right.
Yeah, we'll send this out to you.
And so, so there is no way on the 9th that we can do it because it's not far enough apart?
Correct.
Got it.
Yep.
Yeah.
She just said it's true, I'm sorry, I was telling you things not true.
It's okay, it's confusing, there's a lot of dates in there.
Right, plus it didn't, it said board meeting and I'm thinking, it doesn't say special maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We like the board meeting, so that.
I'll have one more question. So do you have a physical copy at your office over there by Jackson? That we can look at the budget, that's like 170 pages or something?
Give us that again.
I gave each, I gave you one at the end of the last year. I will bring you one of the proposal, you mean?
Yeah.
I will bring it to the meeting.
Okay. Or we can go to your office.
I do, I do, I do not have it yet.
Okay, for next year, you mean?
The one we're currently working on.
The currently one we're.
No, I do not have.
Oh, yeah, we said that we're not going to have.
Yeah, I will, yeah, I, I will bring it to you.
Okay. Bring the old one back.
On the.
Yeah, I got a little one too.
Will we have it by the 12th?
Yeah, May 12th is when we bring the proposal.
Yes, yes, thank you. I think I, I think I brought it.
You get to go home, Jason.
Uh, we need to.
Are there any other questions?
No, I just got a quick preview of what the April 28th agenda just, so if you want to prep in advance, what are you going to go over on 28th?
So it is the legislative and financial forecast update, if we have more, we should, it'll be a month out. Strategic plan update, so one of the things that we're working on with the board and also with our team. We need to come up with our year three strategic plan measurables because our budget should fund the plan. So we're working on that with our team. We'll talk about budget development, so connecting the pieces, the budget to our strategy. What we're, for example, we're hearing accountability is K2 attendance specifically. Well, we don't have specific things that we're focused on K2 attendance, but we need to. So we're going to say we'd like to do XYZ and that's what you guys will hear about. And then I will talk a little bit at that moment about my general recommendations, about what we're thinking. We won't have a budget for you at that time, but you'll hear a little bit more about the progress we've made thus far in our budget development. Yeah.
Sure.
And we'll send this, and we'll send this out to you, this budget document, so my apologies if you don't have it.
Are the individual budgets already, have they already been submitted for next year from different departments?
Yes, well, they've submitted requests.
Well, yes, they're, that's all in, so that's where you're at now is collecting and revising.
That's right, we're bringing it up and we will look at the delta request versus the estimated revenue and then we'll present to you our balanced budget on the 12th. As a proposal.
And to be honest, we have been talking about it as a cabinet because there are so many levers. Like Jason talked about, like per's increases, we know that's going to happen. But currently in front of the legislature is a proposal to decrease that by 1%, which, 1.68%. It should be about a million dollars more money that we get to keep. Well, that's a significant amount of money if we had to cut a million dollars versus have a million dollars. So there's so many levers that it's like, when can we just like go? And so I'm trying to kick it out to have more information, but I think it's our spring break work. They're really excited for spring break, look at them.
Will we get to see the requested amount versus what actually you put out the budget?
Uh, we could talk to you about the ones we needed to adjust if we need to, yeah.
If there's, if it's significant?
Yeah.
Because there's going to be a reason, I would assume, a reason why someone would want a significant increase? And has that been analyzed and?
Oh, there's, I mean, I'm a thing, so.
Should happen now.
Yeah, so, okay.
So we're adopting a program that's your critical science and depending on if we want all the bells and whistles, right, I'm going to ask for all the bells and whistles and then we may, we will talk and adjust it to what we need.
Um, as every department kind of proposes things, we do have to weigh what we need and what we, you know, what's essential and what's not. I think as they started developing their draft budgets, it was like, okay, you can put some things in a wish list and they, they put their information in and then they write kind of what they want. So as we review it, we can look and say, is that something that needs to happen this year? Can we kick it out? Is that like a dream or not? Because obviously it was built before we really nailed down our goals as well. So sometimes we want amazing things.
Another thing is if I was assuming we don't have Title II and I need to think through how I can get professional development and the teacher learning budget.
Right.
So those things will all be adjusted.
A lot like a family. I need so much money.
Who needs shoes?
You don't need shoes.
Fine.
Wear, you can wear the hand me.
Just more zeros.
Just more zeros. Well, it's more zeros.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we will.
We didn't get your statement.
We staying here? Are we going over there?
We fold into our.
You too.
I'm sitting with what I said.
I have seven meetings back to back today and one better.
Hey, we're recording, FYI, I don't think I heard that, recording is proper, Senator.
Seven meetings.
Holly took them.
I'd like to motion that without Jason, you have to go home.
Yeah.
Back in the day, she used to kick me out, like, oh, hey, you need to be like this. I'll be like this on the couch. What are we doing now? House is open, just like.
But you never showed us your smart outside back then. We liked. We liked being here, you're quick.
We will call to order our March 17th board work session. Um, it is 7:37. Thank you everyone for joining us. And we are going to start our meeting today. Yeah.
Okay. Um, with our 202526 district calendar with. Thank you. We wanted to share kind of our process about how we, spread out, spread out, about how we go, what we do when we adopt a calendar or put together the calendar. You all approved a framework for our calendars. You try to do it in about three-year increments. So right now, the 2526 has been approved, the 2627 has been approved and is posted on the website. And then you'll approve the skeleton calendar for the 2728 in May of this year, so that we're always looking ahead. And I've all, already started conversations, we talked the other day in cabinet about a construction schedule, what might that look like, so we're taking those kind of things into consideration too. Of course, a lot of it, we won't know until we get a little bit closer, but at least it's on the radar and it's something that we're talking about as we look at that beginning date, end date, and holiday breaks.
Is it possible to have a delayed start and a late, a late release this year again or, or that, or that not here?
When we do that?
Because of the building, yeah.
Yeah, we're waiting, David is working on, he doesn't know yet what that work schedule is going to look like and the project schedules are going to look like, but that is, that is always a possibility, we need it, yeah.
And then additionally, are we also talking about, right, maybe using King as a way to, if, if we need to be in the school year to utilize it as a, I want to call it a swing school, but I, I think that's the right term. Yeah.
We're also going to go to this, revisiting conferences in the spring for elementary.
That's on here too, yeah.
Okay, so we wanted to share, this process has been quite, it's quite a collaborative process that we go through. We include the principals, we include the two union leaderships in that conversation. And we kind of put something together and then kind of our process is we prepare it, we give it to everyone to take a look at, and then we all come together and try to sort out best alignment for everyone. So those are, that's, it takes us a while. Like right now, we're still, we're still waiting a little bit. But Bethany is the one who has been really in the throes of working on that calendar. It's her great brain that comes up with multiple opportunities, options, and really meeting all of the considerations that are in the CBAs, which I think there's a touch to some.
Yeah, it's, it's so.
Linked.
Yeah, it's linked in the.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
PowerPoint. Um, but what you'll see are the requirements for instructional hours from the state. Um, and then based on our collective bargaining agreements, what requirements we have with regard to the contract year workdays, in-service days, conference days, evening events, prep time, um, special education workload, et cetera. Uh, and so those are the things that need to be considered when we put together the different calendars. Some of them are applicable to multiple levels. Some of them, each level has their own consideration, et cetera. Um, and if there's anything in particular that we as a district consider based on the CBA, that's that like column, the column at the end.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a little bit of a complex issue and it requires it's, she spends a lot of time going through, making sure we're meeting all of the requirements and that we've hit all of the minutes and that we've met all the CBA um requirements on that. And then once she gets that calendar together, then she sends it out to, um, now I gotta figure out how to get back there.
I'll just.
Nope. That was not it. Like just the arrow back there?
Bring it up again?
Down here? It's okay. Yeah, I know I was in Google. I don't know.
Next to settings.
Nope, not it. I didn't think so, but.
Or like six over, Bethany. Just go to Google, see if it's there. Next to settings.
Where are you guys?
We're on the Doc thing. Yeah.
Do history and I need it.
Yeah, but it would have been like there.
Just go to Google Docs.
I don't know, what is it? Where Holly? Is that where she is? I need my computer.
Oh, it's not here.
What's wrong? No?
And then just go, should just go back. Just hit the back.
Okay.
There you go. And then hits, and then if you want, yeah, hit slide two.
That took a few challenges. Okay.
Thank you educators, we appreciate the.
So what this slide goes over is just when we're building the district template. The first step is to build the district wide template. Um, and so these considerations are part of that as well as the board adopted calendar dates that Lisa mentioned that would have been adopted a couple years ago, that skeleton. Um, and then what holidays we have in the state and federal requirements are the instructional minutes or if there are any others which.
The workdays, green days, those are all parts of the CBAs that we take a look at.
There's a little note at the bottom, specific hours and days versus up to. So sometimes the CBA language says it has to be two and a half days of this, it says up to X number of days for this. And so that, that's just one of the things that we're taking into.
And then you have our three snow days hidden there somewhere? We usually put those at the end and say, please hold these days just in case we have to go longer. So from that, I'll let you talk about, she makes all these different, these are the templates. This is where we start, one at each level.
Yeah, so based off of, after the district one is created, um, I look at what requirements are at each level. I look at what past practice has been for those schools. Um, and then we look at the breakdown of um trimesters versus semesters versus reporting periods. And so each level has its own considerations, um, which is what is listed here. Um, some of them, you'll know for this year in particular, um, if there's something special that went into that template, I, I listed it. So for elementary, um, they're on trimesters, which means three report, report cards. They don't have progress reports, so they have three report, reporting days that had to be factored in. Um, fall conferences, always fall in November for elementary, but they want it to be after their greeting period, which is something specific to them. Um, and something for our, our elementaries that they're tight on instructional hours. So meeting that nine hundred minutes required by the state, they're very close to that currently and have been. One of the reasons why we took away spring conferences last year was because they were not meeting those instructional minutes. Um, and so currently they're tight on them. So the question is, do we wanna add back some kind of spring conference? What would that look like with the tight instructional hours? Like where do we give to make sure we're meeting those? Um, so those are some of the things that are considered in the different proposed draft drafts. Um, you can kind of see for the others, they all have their own considerations. They're all in their own special thing. Um, and even for our secondary schools, um, currently OCHS is on trimesters. There's conversations trying to move them to semesters. I built a calendar for them as though they are on semesters. Um, I do have a just in case trimester version, but it's tucked away and hidden and nobody gets to look at it because we're really like hoping for the semesters. Um, so even with essentially all of our secondary programs on semesters, they all have different reporting requirements. Um, and, and grade and progress reporting requirements, which means they all have different days that teachers have to be off for those grade and reporting requirements. So they're all their own special thing. Yeah.
And there's a lot of things that are um conversations about, um, this is what we've done always in the past. We would like to add this back. Um, trying to consider those at the same time, trying to make sure that we're staying true to the allocated minutes that we need for our students and maximizing the amount of time that we are in front of kids providing instruction. Any questions about that? And then these are our district priorities as we look at our schedule, schedules, our calendars. Um, like we talked about the instructional hours, making sure that we are meeting the maximum that we can for that, getting teachers in front of kids as much as possible. And making sure that we have that buffer for snow days and that we are, it's typically, we try to allow about twenty four hours, which is three days of um snow allotment. Just so you know, elementary is on that bubble. That was one of the reasons why we didn't have conferences this year is because we needed that twenty four hours or else we would be over. And then that talks, that means we have to come back. So really trying to be thoughtful and intentional about, do we really wanna come back? Or do we want to have, um, be able to have some flex in that schedule? Most people don't want time cut into their summer. That is.
Spinning out that works.
Hmm, it's a, it's a tricky one.
Yeah.
And when we're talking about going forward with construction, we really need to think about how will that impact too? Those extra days can really have an impact on availability of spaces. Um, the inter-district alignment, looking at what is best for families, trying to keep and for, actually for our transportation department, trying to make sure that we are trying aligning as much as we possibly can so that all kids are in school or that we reduce the number of kids that are out of school, especially when it comes to our, it's okay to have our elementary and middle in-school and high school out, but it doesn't work so well when elementary and or middle are out and high school is in, because for a lot of families, that's their childcare. Um, and then trying to folk, this year we'll be much more intentional about our professional development days and the focus of those days, especially with the new accountability measures. How are we going to maximize those professional development days for our staff and really looking at, are those half-day options better? Are the four-day options better? How do we get everyone aligned and in the same places and doing some similar work to maximize our learning for our staff as well?
Does that have to be bargained as, as far as the structure of it or just amount of?
Amount of it. Um, structure wise, they really like the half-day PD, half-day planning. And what we know is that's a lot of times best for adult learning. So we try to incorporate that model as much as possible, which I think we're pretty successful with doing that. Um, that, the tricky part is going to be what, what time do principals need to talk about building issues versus how focused are we on our strategic plan and our accountability measures?
There are a few um on the proposed calendars that buildings are currently looking at right now. There are a few changes where we, we're trying, what would it look like if we did a morning PD in the building and then an afternoon PD that was district wide? So that there's like a break between the two, but then we have some like common district PD time. So that's one of the things that we're hoping people can feedback on as we share this out in our staff.
And again, this is impacting twenty seven, twenty eight?
No, this is just for twenty five, twenty six. This is for the next school year. So the.
Okay, so we have the basic already adopted, but this is how you're gonna sort all that out. Okay.
Yeah, and meet all of those.
Criteria, yeah.
Yeah.
This isn't adopted by the board.
No.
The board adopts the, the.
We just adopt the basic skeleton, yeah.
Holidays, start date and date, when is spring break gonna be, et cetera.
Yeah. Right, yes, I knew we had, you said it, plus, I remember doing it, so yeah.
Yeah, we do that. Try to do that with a three-year cycle going.
That's why I wasn't quite clear. It's like, we're in the weeds here, so.
Yes, we are, for sure. And some of the other considerations is we always look at how many Mondays and how many Fridays, and we try to make those as even as possible so that there isn't loaded one way or the other. And then staff, teachers, kids, it's really hard to do a lot of three days or four day weeks. So really trying to be um thoughtful about where we put those days so that we have as many full weeks or longer weeks as possible.
Out of curiosity, when you say balance Monday off versus Friday and avoid long break periods, the longer, I mean, if you're both off both Monday and Friday, that often impacts like educational continuity? Is that what they're thinking?
Yeah, it's almost, you know, anytime we're out for a longer period of time, you have to reset.
Retention, yeah.
Mm-hmm, and so it, getting kids, especially our younger kids, back in and back into their routines
Yeah.
is always a little bit challenging. And I don't know, it might be the elementary principle in me, but those three-day weeks are really hard. Um, four-day weeks can be tough if we have a lot of them in a row.
I agree.
But you often have to go back through your classroom expectations, your school-wide expectations. We do that after every break, like spring break or winter break because kids need to practice coming back and getting back in their routine again.
And part of it with the balancing of Mondays and Fridays is that there are some, depending on the level, there are some things that only happen on certain days of the week. And so if every Friday is the Friday that is the day that you're off, then you might be getting less of that class or less of that morning meeting or whatever. So we try to like balance it that way if we can. This was a priority last year and we continued it this year, three full weeks of learning in December. There's just, I mean, the joke is no school November.
Right.
And so we really prioritized last year having three full weeks in session. It's not listed on here, but we do something similar in September. We try to give the entirety of September with that many days off so that um teachers can get routines going so that students can get back into the group before they start to have days off in October.
Okay, and then collecting input. So we do, we share it out with administrators, we share it with our union partners. What are, what we ask administrators and supervisors to do is to share it, take a look at it with their teams. A lot of administrators use their leadership team, which is their teacher teams, to take a look at that. Bring up any, they have a period of time where they can submit questions, bring up concerns, um, see if we need to tweak something in the calendar. Um, if there's, there's a question that we need to bring back to the whole group when we come together to turn it online a little bit more. Um, then, once we get that feedback and any adjustments that we can make, we do make. Otherwise, we wait for a small committee. Usually that's a couple elementary principals, middle school principal, high school principals, our union partners all come to the table and then we literally use the whiteboards and start going through to make sure that we can make any adjustments and alignments so that the calendars are as close to being similar as possible. And sometimes it's kind of funny, there's, it's like you're at a trading table because some will say, oh, that's okay, I don't have to have, that day doesn't have to be a PD day. If it works better and we align with elementary, we can move it to this day. And so then we start having those kind of conversations. Bethany's done a really good job of trying to do as much of that as possible before sending it to them so that that time that we have can be really minimal. Because sometimes it used to take us sometimes two, three-hour meetings to get that done. So this is a little bit more efficient than it has been in the past.
And in the, the process overall, where would it make sense or how would it look to have parent input and student input, right? They're impacted the most by the calendars. Just input is what I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
Right, like they get it and then have to figure out their schedules based on it.
That's a great question. And I think um we were actually talking about this earlier about maybe like what Alex was saying. We have a proposal on the table for next year where our conferences would take place a little later than spring break so that we maximize the amount of time that kids are in front of students before spring break and we don't have so many people leaving prior to um that Friday because we do have a lot of families that just don't come to whatever is happening. They're relatively used to having a ten-day spring break or a nine-day spring break instead of a five or seven day. So talking about moving it to where it's a little more um in April, April's typically a month where we have no days off whatsoever, which we hear from staff is really difficult. Probably best for the kids, but I understand that that can be a long month. Um, so we have proposed that maybe we move that to uh like conferences during April instead of having them in March. And that would be a great thing to ask um parents to weigh in on that. Have, I would be interested to know, because I have a sneaking suspicion that a lot of people like that experience during spring break. And that it might be, um, we might get a lot of folks that like want that extra three days rather than having time off later in April. I could be very wrong about that, but that would be a good time to get some community feedback as well as students on that too. Um.
I would say the most consistent thing that I have heard from elementary school parents this year is disappointment that we're not having spring conferences because they feel like they're not, they don't have that opportunity to direct interaction with the teacher and get really good into it with the teacher. But that, and that's pretty consistent, like many people not just want it to happen here and there consistently.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a, it was a challenge last spring when we were trying to figure out what to do around that. And, and there were a few different things on the table that kind of, you know, the group that voted on it landed where it landed, but it was, it was a hard change, I know. Um, for a lot of staff too. So yeah, we, we came in talking about where are those places, as you can imagine, it's complicated to get general feedback because as you saw in the first two slides, it's complex. Um, but where are there places where we could have people vote on things like having this fall here instead of here? Or, um, you know, how would you feel about this or that?
And then with some education along with that, because sometimes when people understand how extended vacations, for example, in the middle of a school year impact um learning or impact behavior, um, they might think twice. You know, yes, I really like to go on ten-day vacations, but is that impacting my child's life?
I would stress that people that I've talked to who's not concerned about not taking that, that vacation.
Yeah.
They want more contact with their teachers.
They want.
Yeah.
So even, so putting them in a different place would, would be.
Putting them in a different place, I think, would, would be fine, I think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I will say, one of the other things that we pitched with our elementary in particular is, you know, conferences at the elementary level generally take three days because the number of students assigned and you wanna give each person twenty minutes or so. So, um, or more, yeah. So one of the things that we pitched and we've not yet talked to the group about, so we'll see how it goes, um, was around what we tend to call like family partnership days, where we could reduce that to a day and a half or so, like an evening and a day. Um, where there would be an opportunity more like open house style, um, check-ins with teachers and things, but not necessarily having to carve out three days, which would then, again, keeping in mind the instructional minutes for hours at elementary, those are tight.
They're so tight.
Um, so how can we sort of meet that need without taking the instructional days away? Um, so yeah, we're trying to kind of be flexible around what that could look like to.
I will say when I moved to this, I was surprised that there's a practice call night in the fall, but there's not the equivalent of that in this spring, which could help fill that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I will also, I don't want to speak for Sarah, so chime in here, but I think um through the listening sessions, we've also heard that our families don't get timely data um about their students' progress throughout the course of the year.
Oh.
So it's like fall conferences and spring conferences were kind of their touch points.
Yes.
Um, so we've had quite a few conversations about, well, first of all, Sarah's mailing the report card, right? Because that.
Personally.
Every, yes, she's holding, you might be actually inviting out, but. Um, but making sure that they get mailed out because some people didn't even know how to get to them, which is a huge issue. But then we've also talked about.
But then we've also talked about different ways to utilize maybe some tech resources, parent view, et cetera, that we're gonna need to explore, but so that parents can get timely information, even for their kindergartners and first graders, they don't use gradebook in the same way. But if you had a target of, I don't know, identifying all of your letters and reading to a hundred, like you could put that up on parent view. So if as a parent, I saw in September, my child knew five letters and three numbers, and then in December, now they know six letters and five numbers, like you're like, what, what, hold on, what, how come they're not, how come they're not progressing so quickly? And we need those multiple avenues for our parents to see how their kids are progressing, so they know when to be concerned, alerted. I mean, hopefully the teacher's reaching out.
Or at least have a conversation, right?
Yeah, hopefully the teacher's reaching out, but again, I don't know if that's as frequent as it should be, for multiple reasons, so.
We're sitting out paper report cards?
Paper report cards. Sure, going to homeschool.
Nice, like paper. I could get that sucker before mom could.
Well, luckily, but.
I absolutely did that one.
I knew it, they were like, I'm caught.
I never do.
No, I, I do, I do, I did, they got rid of it, but I, I did like the fact that I could check in on my middle schooler,
I never had any reason to.
and I would touch on parent view, and I would pop into another screen.
Yeah.
That's gone now, and so I don't know, yeah.
No one told us, we now are turning it back on.
Okay.
We were just told the other day, and Heather said, what? And it was supposed to be on all year, so.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not been on, I was like, I started going, and I was like, oh, they got rid of it.
Yeah, but no one said anything. No one said anything all year.
It's, you can log in to parent view, and if you have a middle schooler, if you touch their class, it'll auto-connect you to another portal where you can actually see their grades and what they're doing, and yeah, you can actually check in on him, and so we missed that, and I was like, oh, well, we got rid of it, okay, something else, you know, and so I was like.
Hey, very efficient, thank you for bringing that back.
Actually, what strikes me about paper.
Huh? No.
Is I can never get it, which I never worry about.
I don't know if you.
Parents were less likely to even look at it even then. But the fact that there's sometimes, you know what, sometimes when there's so much technology, it's technology overload. And if you, you know, I wanna see my kid's report card, but dang. So if it comes in the mail, yee-haw.
And, and sometimes I think parents are really busy, so, oh, I gotta do that.
Yeah.
Oh, I gotta do that.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I gotta do that, it's like, it's our responsibility, we're good communicators in multiple means, so we're gonna keep it going, see how it works.
I get that. And you still have the other one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, cool.
Mike's mom can still go online.
You know, she's more now than ever young.
You can see.
I don't think.
I have to say, it's kind of sad not having a kid to check up on.
Check one, my kid.
You know, you know what, you do get over that.
Done it for so many years.
I know.
Nice, it's back.
Yay!
I like going through and saying, is there a missing assignment?
Yeah, right.
So I do that all the time.
For sure.
So I just stop.
That's a great feature.
See, you're like you're societally.
We should probably get going, guys. It's getting late.
So once we get the calendars finalized, then they get posted to the website, and then the building calendars are shared with the staff and with the families. And then Bethany creates the some sixty, how many are there, fifty? Fifty-plus work calendars for everyone, so we have many different contracts, many different days. And so then she has to take each of those calendars, depending on what level you are at, and how many days are in their contract, and create calendars for each of those.
Oh, man.
And then those are shared with staff. Our goal is to, they're required to get them before the fifteenth of August. Our goal is to get them before the end of the school year.
We want people to know when they're coming.
What to expect, yeah.
Following year.
For sure.
Another thing that hopefully we will have on the table at bargaining this year is the elementary school day, and that part of our issue with elementary is that we don't have enough minutes in the day, so we had talked about adding more time to the elementary calendar, just by ten minutes a day, which would give us the twenty-four hours of cushion that we kind of need to be within that window. It will take some negotiation, we used to get out at two-twenty, now we get out at two-ten. We used to start at eight, now we start at seven-fifty, so.
Wasn't that because, I remember when we had these long conversations, wasn't that partially because of bus needs?
I do not know.
I think middle school was moved because of buses.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, middle school started later, because the, we were short on the bus drivers, so we had to shift the middle school hours.
Well, this was actually number buses.
I remember when I first came.
Yeah, well, we moved high school to the middle.
Right.
Times.
Because high school was first, then it was elementary and then middle.
Uh-huh.
When we moved them to the middle, we shoved them in the middle and made elementary go earlier and middle school go later.
Middle school later, okay.
So, yeah, which is most.
So finding that, that some of it had, I thought had, the, the reason the times were, was being able to have buses be certain places, right?
Yeah. Nine fifteen.
Well, we shifted, yeah, we shifted from eight o'clock to seven fifty to give us a little bit more window.
Yeah.
But what Lisa's saying is then, could we even shift it to seven forty, and then keep it the same dismissal to get those ten more minutes, which then over the entire year, you would get those extra days, so that we could have, we'd have enough days for snow days, and then we would also have the time to bring back the conferences. But without those, it's so tight when Bethany does all of it. Because the difference is in elementary, their prep time is after and before the kids primarily, and in middle school and high school, it's during the day, so they go someplace else and you've got prep, so the kids are still being counted as minutes while I have prep, but they're with Melissa, but when in elementary, they stay with me, when they're not with me, they go home.
And can you delay the start of early release, too, or no?
That'd be worrying.
On Wednesday.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, if you just like, because I know that like usually the first or second week of school, we don't have early release, and then it starts. I was gonna say, if you delay it a couple more weeks, that's another area you can build more time, too.
That would give us like, so for every week, you would only get an hour, sixty minutes, and she, they need twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours.
Carry on.
So, no more.
That's been done, I mean, some, some just.
Big experience with how to be back on that, too.
Yeah.
Early release, so.
But those are all conversations that we would like to have, trying to get along with that elementary day. Yeah. They have, they have on, what's the time called immediately? It's, uh, on a sign.
On a sign.
On a sign time, from seven-thirty to seven forty-five, seven-fifty, it's assigned time. And then after school is their prep time, from two-ten, or when the buses go, two-twenty-ish, two-twenty-five.
They do have specials.
And they have specials during the. But it's just, it's gonna take some conversations to try to find a good, a good post.
A good solution.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Just that, that calendar size part is definitely we're getting some input from PTOs, PTAs, site councils around. Something that's easier to look at, to understand, because it's definitely overwhelming when you're trying to figure out who's in and who's out some of those days, and there's absolute amount of confusion.
Like this, this, this month for the calendar, it says middle school and case, middle school, no school, middle school, it looks like middle school, case, middle school. And so it looks like, because case, like when you throw MS afterwards, it looks like you made an error, like typo arrow.
Instead of case, middle school.
Yeah, it's, it's, if you just put case, like just leave it as case, it looks like you, you like, instead of putting MS, comma, case, comma, whatever, it looks like you've mistaken elementary school, and so people are like, wait, hold on, does elementary school not have it? Is that a typo? And they're like, no, you're missing a comma, and it was like, yeah, it, it, you can read it all online, and it's kind of funny to watch.
Oh, and that, it's, it's because case, middle school and case, high school aren't always on in the same way.
They don't have the same calendar.
Case, middle school tries to mirror with our other middle schools, or to match their instructional hours. So yeah, so there are a few where it's case, middle school only, but yeah, so no, there's been enough confusion this year, that the way that the calendars look makes sense for how we developed them, but then how do we make them more presentable and less confusing to the public?
Can you do like an elementary calendar, middle school calendar, and a high school calendar?
User-friendly.
So that way, parents can download the one that fits them, and they can slap them up on the fridge.
And the case calendar and the OXLA calendar, yes.
Yeah, something like, something like that, like middle school, high school, and elementary, whatever you need to do, and just, so we can print out which ones are, and then I can just do my calendar that way, yeah.
We also been looking at some other visuals of calendars from different districts, and we really liked one that Beaverton has. So we might try to figure out how we can use that, yeah, that particular layout.
Very like clean and all kind of in one.
Clean.
For sure. I'm turning into a.
We just made a little bit of less confusing. I will say, at this point, with the draft calendars as they are, there's only three days where our elementary and middle school students are out, and everybody else is in, and there are no wonky days, but only one building is out. That is lovely.
Can we make an effort then to have an alternative, like the community ed offering some programming or something, so that students have? I, I know sometimes we do, but that's not consistent either, that. That's a suggestion.
Just do like.
Camp day.
Yeah, well, for that, elementary, they do camps on, on those days, and then at middle school, we used to have like babysitting classes and things on the days, and now when the middle school wasn't in session, and try to do some programming on those.
Any questions?
Okay.
You've got some good work.
Yeah. Don't go under. I'm up for air.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Strategic plan. So exciting. So this is your two-year strategic plan, and the core strategic plan. As a reminder, you know, strategic direction is one of your key roles as a board. Um, the community weighed in on the strategic plan goals, so that's helpful to you in your strategic direction. But at this point in the year, we usually start looking at, what are we being held accountable to, what's our progress? And we just shared that with you last week, and then we started gathering input from folks. So this last week, we met with our core team, which is all of our supervisors, coordinators, and our principals. This week, we'll meet with principals and APs again, because they're in mixed groups at the time, right? And so this is like gonna be more towards our level. We will have an opportunity for you to give feedback tonight, we'll have teacher leaders give feedback, whether we choose that through I L T with building agendas. So either instructional leadership teams, or have the principals take it back to their leadership team, and then we will take all that data and make some proposals with some measurables and bring it back. But at this point, it's an opportunity to kind of chime in on what we're thinking about, so we make sure that we get your feedback early. One of the things that is true, and has been something that we're paying close attention to, is the governor's new bills around accountability are really tight, and we have always been held accountable to third-grade reading, ninth grade on track for graduation, four-year graduation and five-year graduation, those are all publicly shared, as well as attendance. We expect the governor's bill for accountability to go forward, and she has suggested that it's K-two attendance as well, and eighth-grade math achievement, and then there will be a third one from a small list that we can choose from. We, what's the House bill for the emerging badly, thirty-four ninety-nine, thirty-four ninety-nine, House Bill thirty-four ninety-nine, where we talked to you about before, making sure that our emerging badly bills are on track for language proficiency. It probably makes sense that we choose something related to that, because we are measuring it for our grant anyway, but we're not exactly sure what's gonna be on the list, so that's kind of what we're relating to. So what we were going to do tonight is just have you kind of work in twos, and we'll have somebody from cabinet kind of host our posters. There are five strategic plan priorities, I'm sure you have them memorized. Instructional excellence, so what we are going to show you is the draft ideas from core team only. So it's just one of like four groups of people that are gonna chime in, but this work session fit nicely, that's why it's coming too early. So just have you look at those, write down kind of your questions and your ideas. You'll see they're kind of ideas and not perhaps measurables at this point, so it's a good time to kind of chime in. But we're thinking about those accountability measures, as well as how it lines up with our strategic plan goals, and what we might do. Under instruction, career in college, belonging to wellness, engage communities, and safe and engaging learning environments. What did I miss?
I think as long as you understand that there's year one, year two, we're in right now, and then year three has the draft.
So, and I have a couple of questions from last week, and I looked at it again, so I'm just gonna give an example of belonging, the systems of belonging and well-being.
Sure.
Year two goals were the only ones that I, I pulled up last week's thing and was trying to compare them. So it doesn't show that we met any of those thus far, it says by twenty twenty-five. So I'm assuming that meant by the end of twenty twenty-five, or by fall of twenty twenty-five, so that's not.
Are you looking at last week's slideshow? Because we've met things in everyone, so.
Well, nothing was marked up under.
No green boxes?
No green boxes, under goal three.
Under goal three.
Yeah, so, and they all start by twenty twenty-five. Yeah, there's a couple others, right, and I'm just assuming that probably we're working towards those, and they're just not, the information's not there.
Yes. Or that, yeah.
Are there anywhere where we just, we were too ambitious, and maybe we aren't gonna quite get there?
Well, yeah, and I would say like this one with the trust in adult, I know exactly your, yes, there are no green boxes. We, it's because it says each secondary student will have, and we have many, many secondary students who, I know.
Will have listed.
And so it's, we have a lot, but we didn't have every single kid yet, so that's why we didn't, you know, like we could do that yet.
So it might be that future reference, just in the report, maybe you have halfway or making progress.
Yellow check.
Like a yellow.
A yellow groundwork, yeah.
Yellow check, and red check, and then you have the.
Yeah, because that, that way it, it tells us immediately. So there were several in there at the time you were going through it, I was like, oh, I wanna ask this question, but I don't wanna ask this question now. And so that, this was a great time to clarify.
And I would say, there's nothing we haven't started.
Perfect.
So, but that, we could have made that more clear, and I like the yellow.
I love that idea, or if we haven't, like maybe in the first report, you haven't even started, yeah.
I mean. Sure. Sure.
So then red would be, yeah.
But to your, the other part of your question is, I mean, if I look at our data right now, and if I match it to the accountability measures, I don't know about our instructional improvement for five percent based on star alone, I don't yet see that, and regular attendance.
Yeah, well, and I figured that, right, but so we won't know till we know. But we're keeping the data, correct?
Yeah, and, and the data is showing me, I.
We are gonna make it.
That we're, I mean, I hope we make it.
Right, five percent's a big jump.
And we'll keep working, but we, I don't know.
So, but we've wanted to address that then in year three, I would guess.
Yeah.
So that's something that, that's the reason I even asked the question, was I wanted to clarify, to say, okay, so if we're not quite there, which is okay, because you can't be, always be there, right? You set goals, and some of them are stretch goals, and some of them like, you know, knowing how kids are gonna respond, there is some level at where you're making an educated desire to see kids thrive, and, and putting things in place, so.
I will, I will say in general, and we can talk more about this when we get to the posters, as we look at kind of the goals, but I would say in general, one of the conversations that we consistently have, and especially with Sarah and her new lens on sort of the work she's doing in teaching and learning, it's that like all means all. So when we say everybody is implementing our new math curriculum, everybody's doing it. Even if you don't like it, even if you think it's not the one you piloted and you liked, or whatever, like, we're all doing it.
Yeah.
So we, we've had a lot of conversations about how we get even tighter, so you'll see, for example, with the one we were talking about, five percent, we said, or the core team said, PPLA math scores increasing by focusing on a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Like, y'all gotta use the standards and your language arts and your math curriculum, everything. Like, we're gonna focus on that, and make sure people have it paced out, make sure they're doing it, because I think that's been a bigger challenge than we would have thought.
So, but again, if, if we have to, it would be good to know that as we go looking.
Yeah, yeah, so when we go around the posters, we can have those conversations.
So you're saying if we didn't meet one of them, we would, we might wanna continue with it?
Yeah.
Oh, or look at a different way to do it, if, if it didn't, if it wasn't successful, what do we need to tweak?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, yeah, that is a good point.
What about if we, a year one goal we met, but we're really not meeting it anymore?
Wow.
Is, is that a success?
That's interesting, yes, that we have to be aware of, yeah.
Twenty percent.
So how do we track that as we're progressing, the goals to continue to build up, or if it started? Like, do we just touch it and move on, or are we continuing, I have a one light question, it's like, how are we monitoring your?
Uh, hopefully.
Put a red check.
Well, I mean, hopefully, if you have a strong strategic plan, you're taking incremental steps over four years to meet the goal.
That they call it.
So I would hope that there isn't something that we have in year one goal that we just like didn't do,
Your scaffolding.
But I think as we go around, let's, let's look at those, and make sure. So I would hope that there isn't something that we have in year one goal that we just like didn't do, but I think as we go around, let's, let's look at those and make sure.
Having a little checks is helpful.
Yeah, it is.
Just drill down a little bit more.
Two groups of two and one of the three. Start with every one and then we'll go to the next.
How long, how are you liking your job? Yeah, I do. It's much easier to read from here. I can't read.
I think up here, so this is like the safety plan, so the first one. And so working with Gina, kinda, so we need to. Gina, but. So basically over time, just keep progressing.
Before you do that. And by June, you're gonna. So I see this one, I'll read.
We over. Not this one.
Right, that's a check off, but it's just.
Yeah, because we've done one simulation, we have two. Change it one with the.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So these are all.
I'll be down, yes.
And so it'll be a more, so basically we'll build off of what we're going before. So basically we've done, we trained the staff, we trained the parents on the website, setting up. Making sure that there's like. And then the other one is everyone here will either have a table top exercise or live simulation.
No, I was gonna say, I I am, as someone who's like, you know, with some really, I think we're all just trying to. We actually do. At one point in the year, just as instructors, we do some. And then doing it with the kids was probably a flat, of my first year, full year. It is.
And it is for, I mean, most of the ground is adults. The kids, yes, but you know, they're kinda going through it, but the adults are the ones who are about like.
Right, and for me it was the fact that this is we, right? That's what was, yeah.
Right. Um, so the next one is facility rentals. Basically, we talked about that one. This is what I kinda talked about.
Uh-huh.
There, so this one's in like February twenty twenty-five, so they're still working on that. So the rental website.
I like this as a.
Yeah, that's.
Like this all, like it's like a real, like a real website, like a real. People could use, that's not just like a thing, like here's our things, but. Like where people can go there, see what's available.
Well, the one thing, they say the website, but they always have the much of it about it. The the hard thing with us compared to like a regulation is the negotiations between. It's kinda like renting your house out as an Airbnb, you have to negotiate with the owner. And I'm such a loss of that, but just the people, like if people all have whole.
Authority.
Authority over all the buildings. And she has like, I could put in whatever, she'd be great. But what happens is that she has to go every Friday to a high school facility. We're very preparing now for all of the works and all kinds of three months here.
I just think that we can actually do that.
I've been trying to get into do it this year, so there's no way until October. So hopefully they come up and that'll.
Even if they can't, even if, yeah, if they.
It's gonna be not super, it's not gonna be like the private sector, but it'll get better. Yeah, I'll push it. Um, I don't know.
Well, that, cause this is patronage, that's what I'm gonna go in. It's gonna be the same, therefore I'm not gonna have any surprises when I try to get.
See, I'm sure. Like, we know the cross off, I would say like, there will be, you know.
But I think they're talking about the website.
Yeah, I think they're talking about when they break down.
Oh, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think you're.
I definitely.
In a real, in a real way. There is probably some, but not.
We will now have.
Well, well, yeah.
I guess what I'm saying is that we, it's no longer for considering.
It's not a plan for what you. They're gonna make the plan for the following.
Okay. That's not.
Or either way.
It is, it's just not where I.
Sure, no, 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 no.
Six twos, yeah.
Well, this is, this is just a plan to have a plan.
Yeah, right. Well, you're planning.
For considering, we need a plan.
Well, even, if, there's a better way that you could say plan for considering, you know, yeah. But what you're saying is you're not creating. Yeah, that's right. You're creating a, um, a, a, a options for what, how new turf was this basis could be used, right? Because the plan for considering, I mean, you're gonna set a date, that's just a weird, it's like, that sounds highly erotic.
You're right.
So I don't think that's what they're gonna, right? We're gonna make a plan to consider, for considering. Really what they're doing is they need to make a plan for which options will they be using.
Yes, well, we, that's gonna happen. July, and then just very long, it's definitely updated. Well, they're already there.
Are we there? They're like, we're, as things start to ramp up, are we gonna, are we gonna be there? Like, we're, we're, okay, okay.
So every page, every school has a website now. And at the bottom, the whole section of the.
I've seen it, yeah. I just, I just don't want, I just wanna make sure that like, we are, because that is. An easy one that we miss for people to notice.
I hate the way we did it thought, instead of by, just beginning as of July. Like, really, that's a good idea.
I would love to have you.
Well, my question should be. Yeah, it was before.
Well.
But it was last.
It sure was. I'm just saying.
I thought.
That is a really easy thing for people. We don't say, we just have.
I think you're trying to make that.
Yeah, I don't care what I'm saying.
Right. That's true. She does all the websites.
Well, well, some of my facilities, some of my operations teams have been given their own pitch, so they could, they just wait. So they're like.
Well, you know what, you just need to be the hand of the.
Yeah.
Or you. Or.
That's, well, that was my point. I was gonna say, or you could hire someone who specifically, I mean, you're gonna do the.
Here's, here's the thing, that's a fair conversation, cause I think we should be.
Well, if they were doing it specifically for, yeah, I was gonna say specifically, we could hire a contractor.
But that can be. They want to go, just to take a couple ten years.
I forgot about that. Well, and I, I know that it's. Oh, profit. I often ask the facilitation, the director, the running thing. I did, I did some, I did some, I did some technicals, right? I was some contractor. I wrote, I wrote the content.
We'll talk about.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is. So what I'm trying to say is. And, and it can be with.
Okay, let's rotate.
Yeah.
What?
With, right?
Okay, I need, I need the moment.
Alright, so we're moving, we're only moving two. Was I not supposed to say my card? I guess you take your mic.
I love you, Karen.
I got, I got pushed out.
I'm glad that you're straight. Okay, so how much? Alright, so. Yeah, we actually have a second floor. And have eleven hours.
I'm sorry. If you have. I mean, you know.
So this is, yeah, cause we all need this, it's the big thing, so.
It's true.
Yeah, when you watch the. So we are trying to navigate them. Some of the.
I think.
To be.
So this is like to cross. Yeah, so when you do walk through to. It can be different.
You can kind of sign that.
Yeah, so then how do you have.
Five, like, uh, you know, things for. Handle line three post, uh, post.
And we're all gonna.
So then you decide where I left that. So then it's. Yes. This, this, not that it's.
Yeah. So now, is it something that we can realistically say, so like, is this a. Say like, if this is for a.
So they're watching. Cause we all.
Is it something that they have to plan on? Or that you do on one of those.
She's. On. Whatever.
So that way, you know, you.
Yes. She was like rocking the class. The energy was like.
Oh, don't even get me started on the. Are there like.
Their masks can open like.
Just like, yeah.
And I.
We did a lot of.
Cause yeah.
And this is the aspect of synergy. Um, if you go to Tom or Paul, it's. Checking inside your. Aren't over exactly.
Your, your, your activities.
Your activities. Yeah, but checking inside your. Or.
Precision or the.
Yeah.
Like your, your, your activity. Cause you don't show. From there, it's. I thought they lost it. I mean, it's a dream. There's. More, or like, you could do something like, like you want stickers. Cable, then you get the stickers on the. It's an actual. And then they break that. Or your advisory, or the advisory, so that way they know.
They're.
Yeah. Um, maybe sometimes.
But then that's.
Yeah, I could just like. But now that after you've done one, okay, well, you like this.
I don't have like six. I use. I'll just, I don't know. This is a coach. Not, I think you do.
Who's rocking it on you?
Yeah.
Who's doing it on the class?
We need to say, yes, this energy is. So how do you.
My, my. So like. No, he's not. Yeah, probably. He's like, he, he like. Cause they're. So. Yes, that's. Get. Of course. And right now. Such a real. So.
It's like, so we see you as it and somebody like going, well. What's, why is it?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be outside actors. They're apparently getting screwed every day.
It's almost. Sometimes.
Yeah.
Right.
And that happens.
But you have a construct.
My.
Yeah.
Like there's.
Like this.
Work it worse, yes. Yes.
Squirrel.
Yeah, squirrel.
Maybe more.
Two minutes. Was that loud enough for two minutes? Was counting. There, now there are a couple. I like to like, and then I get to put that with.
To.
So that's my favorite part of.
Yeah.
That's it, yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, we.
Cause that's.
Yeah.
Just. We do that now.
But.
The next.
Where.
Yeah.
Or maybe maybe there was like. So.
I think I was a high. I tried to.
Yeah. Hey, hi, Miss Red.
I was never like. Last.
Hi, Miss Red. Or one of the. Like. I was an exchange student. Then. Scope J H B's. Did I go? Do you know it? No. Um. They didn't have no. You know, just an example. Did you just send the gal? No. You can. I sure. Yeah, I was like.
I know.
Alright, safety.
Do pick.
Yeah. So the first one is safety and security. Right.
That was not.
Stay. Always.
Yes. Although.
I just. About. Going with that.
We're at fifty five.
Uh, so you guys invited.
Everyone knows what to do. Good staff.
Thank you.
You guys, I want you to move.
What's. Look. I was like. Something. What is it? Yeah. But that's. Okay. And.
Why? You know.
Oh, yeah, these type of. I mean. So I always. Like. You know what? We're coming, Sarah. A lot of.
I.
All of them. Let's give it. You're so.
So. But not that.
And how old. Oh.
Oh. Scoring. I think.
That must have.
Let's see a little temperature. Let's go. Visuals. I need visuals.
Just because. Yeah.
Two things.
But. But. But schools. They like. They're just basically their sign.
I'm like. Cause I get. I'm like. That's a great. That's.
No, it's just the like younger like. It's you know, it's more of a. But like in your middle school, they're. That's like. Parents are like, I don't know what. Where am I sent? That's that's kind of like. When you say Mari, what is Mari? That to me, you know, I know it's. But. But then they're like. You hear anything. Not necessarily something. So yeah. Hundred percent, so. So we guys. Um. So you guys have six. What is the levels for uh reading?
So you don't say.
For third grade and then what else? Eighth grade math. Can we do six? Can we do six grades, do it every four years? Yeah. Would they like. Uh, reading or these kinds of weird ideas, like four monsters that they. What are. Something come like. Role incorrect. But we should hopefully do something if. Solitary fifth before they go to middle school.
Cause somehow that would know. Understand. Oh, how they could find out. That.
That's right.
Cause. Give it a.
Cause right now. My son is going into.
Available.
Yes, and I'm holding him back. So. Just knowing that as of the challenges are coming and it's basically. Being on, you know, that it would be a lot better if you had reading evaluations. Prior going into school, some middle school change.
I mean.
Yeah, but. When you have a star and it's like. My math is the worst. Yeah, but you see there like you know there's. I guess, yes, we can make sure. So anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. They want. This one is about.
Even if we had a.
But basically. They know.
Oh, okay, this is intervention. So you're. So it's. Yeah. Same grade. It's just because of resources? From limited resources?
Or people who obviously like.
Okay. Guys. Should be.
Uh, there is.
Yeah, we have. Yes. Mark, which. Like.
Just great. Like I like I. But I, yes.
And then. Yeah. Yeah.
Honestly.
As I. So teaching stuff is. Relevant. On the data.
So that is.
Yes, transparent. And you do a. Uh, snack chair like a like. Have. Or like. Maybe the. Can you get. Maybe you could do something where like at this school, the fifth. I have this school, the fourth grade teachers, maybe this school, the third grade. And then they can talk about the problems and the issues they've asked. Do you do that now?
Well.
Which is always. Okay. Um.
That's one.
The. Like. Twenty four hours.
The one is like so. One of these. Access.
Yeah. Maybe like. Maybe. Can we do? Like that would be what.
Well.
Right.
Can expect.
But I.
I found.
And then the third one.
For. And then. I will. Then you say. I mean. Yeah, so that. Yeah. Because I think that if you do that, it would be right here, you know, intervention. Yeah. Well, it would have different schools or experience, different things. Maybe a lot of. It's. Like. That's how it would get passed. Kind of talk sharing ideas. Break three issues that you're. Classroom is great. Three still. Super obvious that you know. Shit. Things that you see them.
Rents were often. This. Over me.
Yeah.
And.
What? Has one two.
Then. One. But. Year.
Interesting. So. For me.
Or. It's.
Over to our. Yeah. Yeah.
And then we're not getting.
Well, for some great level features. Yes, it's. That's.
Correct. This collaboration is not.
Right, right. Correct. Well, I'm like, that's what I'm saying, it's like bring three issues that you're really like. So that. So then it's. Yeah, it sounds like it's not. It's not like you're as troubled as. You can. What do the other teachers do? In place of that.
Get ideas. Yeah. If you're not doing ideas, you're only working like this, then.
Yeah.
Well, you should. Yeah. Correct.
No, right.
And this is. This is how you. Company.
Just.
And if you.
You think.
Right. It's.
They're.
Or like.
You don't have.
Yeah. So they're not making.
Everything is that. One that's. Where you know. As we. That's. And then it gives.
I realize.
Levels of.
Yeah. Yeah.
I. Which. We. Because you're. I mean.
So we just.
Well.
Yes.
A little.
So like the last one. It wasn't.
They have.
Yeah, they walked. Another. Sorry. Yeah, so they doing this. But help the teacher. It would help them. What. Yeah. Even though what we're. Two minutes.
So. So this this.
Which is.
Like. Without idea. Whatever. We're.
Uh. I mean, I don't know.
I don't.
Maybe that's.
And then. Let's. Put it. Then takes.
Those. Those.
Switch. Wait, hold on, wait, wait, hold on. Oh, yeah. Cause I might stare at that one for a while.
Oh.
I would wanna put it.
Welcome. Alright.
Are you. Same shit.
They're literally.
You know, he'll be.
Yes. Alright, so next year they're. Safety plan. I communicate all the role.
Yeah. Making a. Jesus. We just keep kicked kicked out. Well, I'm here. Hi. Wow. So. I know. Actually, I was gonna.
Email and you.
Holly. Okay.
I I. I don't know, how do you, how do you make somebody read? We have contracts for football. Oh, cause we're still on. You said you signed it and you read it, which you yet.
Oh, you're right.
So we remember.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I.
I don't.
And then the next one is. So this year we're doing two by one, really the first year we did one with district staff. And this year we just have. Mine's. That's just staff. Just staff. This is still the staff.
Brad, ideas.
Okay, yeah. I just. Just doing like. There's a lot of people. We want, if we want a model.
You don't wanna.
Correct. So. And.
Yeah, well.
Pretty. Change.
Yeah.
Eventually. Public district. Yeah.
We do, but.
I.
I don't. I don't.
I think. High school.
And. Right, and then how likely.
This is all like. Like it's. I mean. Even watching.
Oh. So. There's only.
And. Over.
They were five.
He's talking about this.
No, I mean, but I'm.
Each one has.
No. But the question. The problem is. There's so much like. That like. Their.
It's. It is not.
So I hear. So. That well, this is like. You're saying you're expanding.
This system, the privacy system.
So they're adding twelve. Could it carry to five hundred. Or expensive. No.
Which would.
Even though. But not. No, so then you got. Cardinals and then.
Well, I have. There's plenty of. Yeah. There you go. Really. I like. But I like to centralize. To reserve on this. Cause we. Space also some.
Well, so for example, like. Well, there's five. Plus, there's the. Four hours. Service is one. Cause under that this year we can. Or to give. Next year lesson four. Cause we don't. Do engagements. And do that now. So two more. So there. Having questions. Or is it four two or dimension? Because they have all the. Five dimensions.
Yeah.
So then. Character of like. We have two. They don't. They.
So what you're saying is you will add.
That's your. Correct.
Twelve.
Four. But please. We'll stay.
But two additional two.
I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay. Just. Well, there's.
Thirty six total. Yeah, I think that the plan is that. Even though it's a. It's a. Age walking. So.
It's more, I think. I. When you actually get to finding out, right in a way that people don't. And.
Well, so so like the band comes up. All. Exactly. Cause I. I was. I mean, there's. All of it. So they. They. So they well, they're. Yeah. My. Like. What happened? And that's. There's. I still can see. Kind of. Really made.
So funny, I don't know.
I know they get put down. So like. They get. Well, but soccer. Right here, but they won't. Fire.
Because.
So they want. It's gonna be.
Right, but actually what we're really thinking is. Oh, two. It's very. Pretty easy.
No, that.
I did it. Perfect. That's.
And then the last one is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it does. Get. No. Oh, yes.
I don't know. Or. Is it talked about in the last?
So. Oh.
I have. Oh, baby. Oh, yeah.
No. I didn't write that. Right here. Oh, yeah. I quit.
I mean, there's need to be like. You know, maybe. Yeah.
But is this from like. Is this from. Have you ever said?
Like.
Dave. Dave. Oh.
So two minutes.
So you might have like. It's. Back.
For your.
You can have a. So there. Just.
Like our day off. So then.
And then.
Cause I wanted to. It's totally. Yeah, I just. I turned. Because. That.
My. It must.
Research. Yeah. So you can choose like you just put in.
That's the website.
Or days.
Cause this is giving, this is giving another lift on top of. Maybe. This is giving this is giving another lift on top of the regular twizzles.
I've said that.
Look.
They just do like we don't know what they're gonna be. Does a great job trying to do it, but.
Sourdough bread and then to San Francisco.
Sourdough. Right, switch. We got one more. One more.
I support.
Yeah.
For.
Yeah, you totally get.
We're off, thank you, Michael.
And I was like, I'm writing.
You you you. I was like. Come on. But these ones. You are.
Yeah, like the conversation. No.
This you know where is the mother, our mother?
Yes. These people are we the people. Of course.
Right, where. Thank you. Moving on.
Alright, you saved.
We don't have.
Sixty. Give give. Okay, where is this? Sixty. You want. They don't need to do. Or age and ninety five, they need to get those R R F. Those R R F I D mats or whatever they are. Put their phones in. Click and hit ours huh? Yeah. They open up and blow up their phone again and they.
Guess what? Survive.
Really? You don't. Yeah, she'll save money in there.
Okay, so the first one is basically. All of those. Each year we. Poorly, poorly. Too much.
We check the.
I got a great. Um. Talked about it. Share with parents, reputation information, nature, they have received.
Oh, wow.
I didn't. So. And then the next one from. So kind of did the district wide ones, the first hand and next year, this year we're doing. Next year. You got three doesn't. You gotta talk about it, only gonna have to walk through it.
I understand.
Teachers. It's not very engaging and so it's very. You know. It takes a while, so I think we're. Very. So that would be. All details.
Right now it's. So when you have a table class exercise or life simulation or reunification, is that something for like. Or. Bombas or.
It's one we'd have to move and we'd have.
Do this out of class year into a safe area for them to turn around and go to parent.
Yeah, well, for some reason we have.
No, that's. Notice.
I mean, really. Well, we talked about. We're trying to get them to. Do a. Right, all the kids. You're kind of. Right, let's ask. All these. Do it, but just look different because. Whether it's. The second one, um this is the facility, Michael. Website. And so.
So. It let us.
Well, I think. Yeah.
Yeah. Where you don't have to be. I think that's the way to generate some money for this thing, that it means extra months, but like we pay our field rentals this year was almost thirty thousand, so we paid. So it's like when you use a facility and you give it back, that's how they raise more money to offset.
And I and I'm not.
So, yeah. Um. I don't think that people know that we have.
I'm.
But you still have that with like supervisor correct or it does the insurance. Like if they have to have a certain rider insurance. So I'm assuming like if they if they rent, yeah, if they rented a facility, the rider would the rider would cover advantages like um that in school districts. No, they're mature enough to get that claim through, but we just don't.
So the. But I can't get it. It's um our. So.
Yeah.
So see it's.
Two minutes.
You're. There is one. I'm. Probably like a big tournament.
Yeah, like. Like a basketball tournament where you can even sure kids are running around. I like that, I mean, I like those.
And when people were asking for more details of what it is, it looks like you're. You got.
You're not.
Your writer or this?
They said it wasn't. I remember you speak at all. So like I'm like. You're a gaffe and you have the future. So I mean, that's. Future stuff, they're just saying the doc like consistency maybe to change that, I guess. I'm not sure where I think. And then.
They're all like.
Yeah. And that's part of the thing making it more exciting to be like this is what it's like. Kind of like Airbnb, you wouldn't just be like, oh, I just want a house on the coast. Right, you wanna see pictures of it and one of them. What size of the. How many bathrooms are they?
And the fees that go along with it, what what do you expect? Do you have to clean? Do you have to do this? Do you have to do this if you don't?
It's gonna be.
Yes.
Uh. That's that one.
I put down here, can you make hours of contact one day a month after hours? Like, is there a time that you can make it so if something needs to be handled? Some people work during the day and can't get have to the things or talk to people and so it's really hard to contact someone. So even if it's like a once a month kind of thing, like for people that can't. Buy the setting. One day a month, yeah, one day a month. Later, you know, later. Yeah, for contact. Yeah.
Which is why, for example.
We're having issues. Yes. And because we're having issues, I can't get my husband in there because he's out the door at five o'clock in the morning. And so there's no time for him to come in. Well, switch the card, but the problem is if he can't get in, and so when he did take a day off to show up and do it, it was raining. And so he showed up to the building at four and no one was there and he was pissed, he was like, I left work early, are you kidding me? So, yeah, so he was like, I was like. You gotta, I was like, I know you're, I I know that it's like, we just. One day a month or something and we can say, hey, it's one day a month. Once a month, we're gonna be open till six, one day a month, and so pull up work and get there. Okay, afternoon, so.
Three years bonds. So this one's about the bonds, so by March twenty twenty six. So Seba will have provided this game by part to the board. Alright, so here the book is about how frequently should the Seba report to the school board more than once every other month?
Once a month, I think.
Yeah. Time. Maybe it says monthly right there. Yeah, it's just update, you can just add.
You're gonna want to. And just. For example. You have contingency that's just.
I enjoy doing that.
Right. Yes. Back to your team. What? I don't. I know. I do.
So for instance, like middle school.
Actually came down with back the time I said. Cause he said. I think yes. Um, I was gonna say, I.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a little bit. Yeah. Yeah, but. Well, not. It would have been. They would have been tighter.
So each so each school is divided up.
Not hoping.
So there's.
But they wouldn't be, they would have been square, but not but not. That's just maybe right where I saw it. They would have been, they would have been just completely square and not.
So each each school was a lot of different. Based on the bond or based on how much.
That's so funny.
Almost best necessary.
And then.
Yeah, I was saying. Okay, thank you.
I love you. I couldn't never know you quit, but I thought, I mean, I just.
Thank you so much, I think that those conversations were super valuable to me at my um station, I think probably to everyone, and we'll be taking feedback. We'll be continuing to gather input from leaders whenever more. Maybe something that's a little bit um has fewer as in zero for medical errors, Alex, don't you worry. We might have one. We'll turn that to zero and we'll make them more manageable, you know, but you had really good ideas, so thank you.
Thank you for designing it, Sarah, it was very, I enjoyed participating, thank you.
You all did a great job and it wasn't me by myself.
Okay, thank you all.
Yes. Um, so last week I had told you that the strategic. The integrated grants application would have, where I said Shelley's in the audience and you know, there's gonna be a few changes, so she has added a couple paragraphs in there. And so Holly re-uploaded for the board packet so that you have the one with the. And all it is is anything that was different from what we said about O C S D that applied to A C A. Greg Mylett felt like everything was okay for spring runner, so it's just red if it's different and I want to be clear about that because you're voting on it.
Who is?
Holly is right now.
Okay. As we speak.
I don't know, I'm I'm not trying to keep over it.
Oh, yeah, we we thought we would take all this back, kind of tip it up, bring in two principals, have teachers and then bring something back to you, cause I think you're the second group of a few groups that we're having chime in. But thank you so much for all the feedback, it's great.
And questions or comments or wondering? No, I like that. Good. Alright, well.
Yeah, you too.
What?
I thought it was great.
Oh, our next meeting is April fourteen, so it'll be our regular meeting. Some. Got it, got it.
Oh, my. One more.
Alright. Yeah, well. Let's see. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Stick it down.